Cactus, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. Do we have any other commissioners on Zoom? No. All right. We need to call the meeting to order and do a roll call to see if we have a quorum.
Thank you, President Broussard. Roll call. President Broussard.
Here.
Thank you. Vice President Cavelo.
President.
Thank you. Commissioner Torgerson. Commissioner Torgerson is absent today. Commissioner Bowe. Thank you. Commissioner Schiffer. Thank you. Commissioner Rithaler. Commissioner Rithaler is absent at this point. Commissioner Curra. Thank you. Commissioner Francisco. Commissioner Francisco is not on the line and is absent. Commissioner Wildcat is absent as well. We do have a quorum, commissioners. So, and also Senator Driscoll, Legislative Liaison, is absent at this point. Representative Newsom. Thank you. Governor's Liaison, Tom Lubinow, is absent this morning as well. He has COVID and was unable to attend the meeting. Commissioner Torgerson had some business situations that jumped up yesterday and is going to be absent today. He may try to join in. And Commissioner Wildcat is traveling today as well, and Francisco is also tied up today. And I expect Commissioner Rithaler to join us momentarily. Commissioners, also just to let you know, Vice President Cavelo has to take off for about 30 minutes, I believe, this morning. He will be staying online, muting and muting the camera, and then he'll be back. I think, what, at nine, nine o'clock? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Do you, you're doing the welcome and the...
Yes, thank you. Welcome to the July 11th, 2024 Special Meeting of the Wyoming Gaming Commission. The primary mission of the Gaming Commission is the protection of the wagering public and health, safety, and welfare of the participants in all lawful gaming and paramutual activity. Individuals who wish to address the Commission will be recognized and called upon by the President to speak. After the President has recognized you, please clearly state your name, the name of your organization you represent, prior to addressing the Commission. All comments, questions, and responses must flow through the President by addressing the President each time you wish to speak. Additionally, please identify yourself each time you're speaking for the record. This procedure ensures an orderly flow of discussion during Commission meetings. All meetings of the governing body of an agency are public meetings open to the public except as otherwise provided in Wyoming Statute 164403A. The meeting is being held today via Zoom and is also available to watch via the YouTube link. The Commission may open an executive session at any point, again pursuant to 164405A. Inclusion on the agenda does not necessarily constitute a Commission action. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. At this moment, if you guys wouldn't mind standing up and joining me in the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know the next item is President, Vice President report. I'm got a feeling we'll have a lot to say during the meeting, but Cactus, if you have anything you'd like to to add at this point.
No, sir, Mr. President. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number two, adopting the agenda. Entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Bowe. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call the vote. All in favor of adopting the agenda for today, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. That carries. So, for those of you who have not seen the agenda out there, we're going to try to streamline the meeting by putting a few items on a consent agenda. But at this point, I want to make sure all commissioners are okay with what's on the consent agenda. If anyone has reviewed the items on the consent agenda and would like to pull them off.
President Broussard, if I could, I'll read those items if you don't mind, sir.
Quickly.
So, again, President Broussard trying to streamline things, we feel like this is appropriate to do a consent agenda. So, the first item on the, that is being proposed on the consent agenda is item number four, the approval of the minutes of the May 9th meeting. The second item on the consent agenda is item number six, skill-based amusement games requests. A, amending license sunrise distributing to add pay somatic games. B, pay somatic software cowboy skill, four new game themes and general software modifications. Item number nine, historic horse racing requests. We have A through J, and I do need to read these into the record. AGS Software, HHR, XACTA, five new game themes and associated math models. Everly, B, Everly Software, HHR, XACTA, one new game theme and associated math models. C, Ainsworth Software, HHR, two new game themes, update, two updated game themes and associated math models. D, Aristocrat Software, HHR, Ainsworth, one new game theme and associated math models. E, Konop, Konoma Software, HHR, Ainsworth, 12 new game themes and associated math models. F, Light and Wonder Software, HHR, Ainsworth, 21 new game themes and associated math models. G, Epic Tech Software, HHR, XACTA, 11 new game themes, 21 updated themes and associated math models. H, Light and Wonder Software, HHR, XACTA, 17 new game themes and associated math models. I, Blueberry Software, HHR, XACTA, two new game themes and associated math models. J, Gaming Arts Software, HHR, XACTA, two new game themes and associated math models. And then finally, item number 10, under General Commission Business, is our financial report. Commissioners, we would need a motion to create the consent list at any point. If any of you without objection can remove something, some from the consent list. So, the first step would be, if you're in favor of the consent list, as it was presented, would be to have a motion to accept those. Obviously, a second and a discussion and vote.
Thank you, Charlie.
Second.
Any discussion regarding that? Would anyone, does anyone feel a need to pull things off or change that? Okay, not seeing any, we will call the vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as listed, say aye.
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 If anyone's opposed, say no. All right, we're moving on to item number five now.
President Broussard, before we move on to the next item, now we need to have a motion to approve the consent list. So, the motion to approve the consent list as created and presented, we'd need to move that, second it, and have discussion, and then vote.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 If anyone's opposed, say no. Okay, let's see, Ruben's on now. Ruben, can you hear me? Not quite. We'll give him a second.
Vice, or President Broussard, just for, so the record reflects, Commissioner Rithaler joined the meeting.
Okay, so are we okay to move on to item five, Charlie?
Yes. That's always one of the things I used to tell people, if your phones go off, what don't you, isn't that where you, what was it we had years ago? One of our representatives would, would make you buy drinks maybe afterward or something like that.
I'd like to incorporate that in the meeting, though. Between each item, we have sort of some music, the transition.
As I hurry and mute my phone, too.
All right, thank you. So, we're...
Item five, online sports wagering. Nick, do we have the folks from Prohibit Bet on? We can, yep, there we do. Commissioners, good mor, what I want to introduce to you is Prohibit IC360. Our presenter today is Matt Hep, Managing Director. For everyone's information, this is not a solicitation, this is not a, you know, presenting to the Commission for something for us to invest in or anything. This is informational. This is a product that they have out there, and we'd just like to get that out, to try to educate you all of this product and the things that, that Prohibit Bet is doing in the space. In your packets, commissioners, you do have slide presentation, and at this point, I'd turn it over to Mr. Hep, and go forth, sir.
Mr. Hep, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Executive Director Moore, for the invitation to speak to the Commission. And thank you to the Commission and the audience as well for the brief opportunity here to fill you in on what we're doing with IC360. By ways of just a short introduction, again, Matt Heap, I'm Managing Director of ProBet, which is a product within IC360, formerly known as U.S. Integrity. And my, my prior experience was as a regulator in the state of Colorado, where I retired in 2022 as the chief of the Colorado Division of Gaming. So, compliance and regulatory oversight obviously is in my blood, and upon retiring, went to work with IC360 to help them with government relations, regulatory compliance and oversight issues that they could bolster, and, and helping with the responsible gaming initiatives that, that we're carrying forward with IC360 and the different products that we offer to regulators as well as to licensees and then to sports properties and schools and universities. I believe you all have received the slide deck that I provided earlier and presented to Executive Director Moore and his team a couple months back. It would be helpful if I went through that now and shared that on the screen for everybody else and, and then fielded questions as they go along. It's pretty short presentation, but I'm happy to, to share that unless you guys just would like me to explain the product, the way it works.
I'm okay with you presenting it. Anybody have an objection? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are you all seeing the ProBet first slide?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So, once again, the product's name is ProBet. It comes from IC360, which is an integrity, sports betting integrity company that offers, like I said, a bunch of different compliance products for the entire ecosystem for the sports betting. What is ProBet? ProBet really is the first and only safe and secure technology that has been created and brought into production for the sports betting ecosystem, where sports betting properties and universities are able to safely and securely upload their prohibited betters that maybe are on their teams or on their staff, that are prohibited by law and regulation and NCAA policy. They enter a list that gets encrypted, and I'll go through the, the technology here in a minute. But in short, it, it was one of the chasms that was kind of created when sports betting was legalized in all the different states. I know that in Colorado, we struggled after we promulgated our rules of how are we going to have the ability to safely and securely allow the local schools and sports teams, et cetera, to enter their prohibited betters that they had in a safe and secure manner, and also have the licensees who have an obligation to ensure they're not allowing people who are prohibited from signing up to cross-reference some sort of a database. And, and that just really was not in existence until we were able to create this product. We were in a beta phase for this for about 10 months, and then we went live in September of 2023. Just some brief statistics before I go through the slides. As of today, we, we have had over five and a half, close to six million checks against the database and over, you know, 500,000 names and/or pieces of encrypted information in there for the sports betting operators to cross-reference against. It's been designed with the most up-to-date security encryption technology. Like I said, there's over 150 participants in the, the program, from regulatory bodies to licensed sports betting operators to sports properties, whether it's collegiate or professional. The biggest number of sports properties that we have actively using the system and uploading their lists as of right now are collegiate institutions. We have contracts with all of the major conferences, and they are either fully integrated uploading their lists or they are in the process of going through implementation and finalizing how that might work. Just real brief background, this, this was a product that was a joint venture product between U.S. Integrity and Ozon Compliance, which I previously mentioned with the, the beta program. Quickly, the way that the security and the privacy aspect of this works is we utilize what's called one-way cryptographic hashing, which basically turns personal identifying information into irreversible jumbled-up data hash strings that sit in the ProBet server, and it is not, there's not the ability to reverse engineer that and turn it back into its original form. It's one-way. So, Matt Heap, date of birth, 1-1, 1970, social security number, that's XYZ. All that information gets inputted from the professional sports properties and the collegiate leagues on their network. It's encrypted at that level, and before it ever leaves their facility or their computer network, it is hashed into jumbled-up data, where the operators will utilize that same technology with their patron database, and they will cross-reference that, that list. And then when there's a hit or an alert generated, everybody is immediately notified that they need to log into their applications and take a look at things before they go any further. We have a couple of security and privacy white papers that are available to anybody should they, would like to take a look deeper into, you know, how that, that works. But we knew that security and privacy, if that was not the fundamental, you know, building block of this product, nobody would use it, understandably so. And so that was what we, you know, designed the entire system with that being the paramount issue, that we wanted to protect that information. Some of the frequently asked questions about the product is, you know, why is prohibited better solution needed? Obviously, you all know that there's regulatory mandates that prohibit certain individuals from participating in sports betting or at least betting on certain type of markets. And that's the case in every legalized jurisdiction. The verbiage maybe is a little bit different from one to the next, but it's pretty much the same. And it, it pretty much defines anybody that has undue influence or inside information, such as managers, players, officials, referees, administrators, trainers, anybody like that, has, has typically been defined as a prohibited sports betting participant, either across the board. For say, if it's an NCAA athlete or NCAA employee, pretty much can't bet on anything with exception of about a handful of events that they don't issue a championship for. And if it's, let's say, Major League Baseball, who is in the process of integrating with us. If that is the case, you know, they're just prohibited from betting on what the Commission defines as bat and ball or diamond sports, but they're allowed to bet on other things. So, we customize each person, each entity's account so that they can prohibit individuals from specific things, everything across the board or anything in between. We already kind of talked about who is considered a prohibited better. How frequently the prohibited better lists are uploaded kind of depends on when there's material changes to the prohibited betters that the, in specific sports property has in their midst. We discovered as we approached the end of this past college school year, there was a huge influx immediately upon graduation or the expiration of NCAA athletes' eligibility. They were immediately going to these betting sites and fantasy operator sites and things of that nature and signing up literally in some cases within minutes of them, you know, stopping their play. I, I can remember watching one of the College World Series games and just recognized a fairly unique name. And within a matter of 10 minutes after the game was over, that person was generating an alert, or at least through that school. And when we were assisting the, the university and the sports betting operator on the alert, it was in fact somebody that had just stopped playing. So, it, it's, it's a pretty prevalent problem out there that this product is intended to be a proactive preventative measure to try and help stop that so that we don't see some of the betting scandals that, you know, appear to be in the media almost every other week here for the past, you know, several years at this point. How often did Sports Operators Trust check against the list? There's two ways they check against the list. One is checking their account database, whether it's attempting to set up an account or when somebody's actively trying to log in. And the second way that they can check is at the time of the wager attempt. Most of the operators have opted for a lot of reasons, which we are actually supportive of, to go with that first option, which is checking the accounts at account creation and then account login, because it really does allow for the brakes to be put on if something comes up and, you know, a little extra background work needs to be done to make sure that, you know, that sports property or school and the sports operator are in fact dealing with the same person, and they can make sure that they either stop that transaction from going any further or not letting them sign up for an account. And so that's the most preventative and proactive way. Do we, we do have a handful of operators that utilize checking the wagers. They either check them right at wager attempt or batch every, you know, hour to run all of their wagers through and cross-check it and then, you know, go through whatever may need to be done and then put the proper guardrails on that patron's account if they discover that in fact somebody is prohibited or on a prohibited list. And then the last question we really get is how quickly are the alerts generated? And as I said earlier, alerts are generated immediately upon a matching inside of the database, our server, where this hashed data matches and aligns on different data points. And simultaneous email with no identifying information goes back to sports property A and also to back to operator A and saying, please log on to your application to find out the details of an alert that was just generated. Then it allows for the, the two entities to connect with each other and work through whatever they may have their due diligence on, you know, ensuring it's the same person, what was going on, are there other incidents that we need to look at? And so that, that, that's kind of how the alerting process works. The type of information that we have to receive from the schools and universities and/or the pro sports, pro sports properties, is it a minimum, it's first name, last name, and date of birth? And then we ask for at least one other identifying piece of data, which can be any of these other ones. Last four social, driver's license, zip code, email address, phone number. And the more data, obviously, that the leagues and schools enter, the, the more quality of the alerts, the less amount of false positives, the less amount of alerts they will receive, and the better the data is that the operators who obviously have all of this information and more really can cross-reference against it and, and kind of fine-tune, spending their time on the, on those alerts that really are, in fact, you know, one and the same person from the school or the, the pro sports properties. We have received all of the different regulatory certifications and compliance certifications, penetration testing. Different states require different things for schools with FERPA and the student-athlete information protection, different regulations and laws that are out there. Those are accessible as well to anybody that would like that by obviously scanning this, or I can provide that to anybody after the fact that, that really would like to take a look at any of those testing for any reason. And then finally, as this product has gone to market and we realize how well it's working and, and the positive feedback and momentum that we've gained, we are now also moving into additional uses of the ProBet system. And really, this one is, is more designed towards the regulatory sector, such as you all, that maybe have an obligation of running a self-exclusion list and managing that. We certainly can design and customize this exact system that utilizes the same level of technology and security and privacy standards to help the different regulatory bodies utilize that to manage their self-exclusion list, if that's something that fits into, you know, the way that things might work best for them. So, I know I just said a mouthful, and I think now would be a good time for me to pause and see if, if there's questions or anything that I can answer that might be helpful for, for anybody there on the Commission.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have any questions regarding the presentation? Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you, President Broussard. Mr. Heap, so this could be utilized for the state of Wyoming, basically, our staff, our employees, or even our commissioners if we felt that it was necessary?
Absolutely. I mean, especially for the self-exclusion list. This is a product that has obviously been presented and they're to all of your licensed operators. It's been presented, obviously, to any of the NCAA institutions. I'm assuming University of Wyoming is probably the only one, but that would fall into the category of using this in the state. But, yeah, we've made this same presentation to everybody. It is an extremely commercially reasonable product, but it also is for regulator use, something that we offer all of our IC360 products as a support service with, with, with no strings or charges attached to that to any of the regulatory bodies, should they want to utilize this system in some form or fashion for their, for their list management.
Thank you. A follow-up, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
Again, thank you. Has this been provided to, you know, obviously, the tool is designed to assist compliance with the NCAA in a lot of different situations out there. Has this been provided to the University of Wyoming?
Yes, we've had a couple of outreach attempts to the university. We do have a conference contract with the Mountain West Conference, where they have contracted, and they have all of their staff and league officials and referees entered. We, and they have not mandated that it is... Some of the conferences do a conference contract and sign all of the schools up. And then some conferences, such as the Mountain West Conference and the ACC, have signed up at the conference level and then allowed for each individual institution to opt in to the program. So, we do have some Mountain West Conference schools that are integrating or have already integrated and uploaded lists. And then we have others that have chosen, just at this point in time, not to for whatever reason. But yes, this has been presented to the University of Wyoming.
Thank you. Go ahead, Charlie.
One more follow-up. Thank you. Can you disclose to us how many of the Mountain West teams or groups have been signed up so far?
So far, there are two under contract. I'm going to stop sharing and look at something real quick here. There are two that are under contract. I'm sorry?
You could sure follow up afterwards with that.
Okay, yes. There, there's two under contract that are in the process of integrating. All the others, we are either in discussion with how the best way for them to move forward with, understanding that some of them may have some financial concerns with everything that's going on right now with the NCAA. But we also are amenable to helping them find the funds that, that would be necessary to run this program. I can tell you that we do not make cost a barrier to utilizing this product because without ubiquitous coverage across the entire ecosystem with data from all profession and collegiate leagues, this product doesn't reach its full, full potential. So, we are constantly working and trying to find ways to, to help universities that, that maybe have used that as, as rationale that they're, you know, have not signed up yet.
Thank you. One quick question. This seems like it's mainly an operator responsibility. Am I right? So, how many of our operators are using this?
I would need to get exact list of who all your operators are, but I can tell you, with exception of one licensee, that we are not very close with as far as getting to the contract piece of it, every other licensed operator is either integrated or in the process of integrating and finishing their contract. So, to respect some of their privacy, some of them have not either wanted to make that public. We do have press releases on all of the operators and schools and leagues that wanted to make a press release on that, and that is available on our website. But, but other than that, all of the operators that you have in the state have been negotiating in good faith to get this product up and running. One of the, one of the things just to share with you, which, which may not be of new news to you, is that the whole integration process with any of these software update... you, is that the whole integration process with any of these software updates or new programs, there's a real small window because the football season basically dictates the entire year of what they focus on at the sports betting operators and what they commit resources to. And we're kind of in that window right now where they're cramming every integration and update and new product in during the summer months and trying to get all of those things up and running before August. And then they really kind of want to not touch anything because of how much activity and revenue that is generated during the football season. And that's kind of when they don't really want to mess around with technology. So that kind of ballpark answer there for all the operators and happy to share any of the other information, either offline or additional questions on how that is going and happy to come back and give updates too, if this is something that's of interest to you all as we go along. We're adding new operators and new leagues every day and the numbers should jump dramatically. There will be a big operator coming online next Wednesday that I do believe is licensed in Wyoming, but I am not positive. So again, these things are happening pretty fast and the momentum is been something that's been very good to see.
Thank you. No, you've answered my question. Appreciate it. Do we have any, Dan has a question?
Kind of a tangential question, but so if, say, your software identifies, say, a college athlete at the University of Wyoming is attempting to make a bet, is there any nexus to go from that identification to dealing with, you know, that individual in the process that, you know, they have to go through when that happens?
Yeah, tip in that. And I'll utilize a difference, different state institutions or universities since Wyoming is not a part of the program, but it would work the same anywhere. What happens is, you know, university Y gets an alert and what they will first do is obviously take a look at the fields that matched. We don't have any visibility to any of the PII. All that we know is that an alert's been generated, but they will be able to log on to their application and see exactly which field's name, maybe it was first name, last name, date of birth, and zip code that matched. And then we will score that as a confidence level and then they will have the ability to communicate directly with, let's say it's ESPN Bet. And ESPN Bet will be able to tell them, yeah, that, those are the fields that it matched on our side, but here's some additional identifying information. And then depending on what they find out with that inquiry, the school will then, you know, take the appropriate action with dealing with the student athlete. The nice thing is if they're able to identify it, let's say at signup, and the sports betting operator just stops it right there and doesn't let them go any further, at least the damage has been mitigated and it's been identified right at the get-go. And the consequences and the intervention and the preventative measures are installed at an earlier part of the investigative process, which would allow for maybe less of a compliance-type action necessary to be taken on that student athlete as opposed to finding out 13 months after the fact this person's been betting on such and such website for, you know, all those months and then all the things that we've seen in the news of how that shakes out and loss of eligibility, reputational damage to the institution and the state. We're trying to prevent that type of stuff and we're also trying to identify if somebody continues to try and log in and find ways to try and circumvent this system to get them help, excuse me, with some responsible gaming and different programs that we may be able to say to the institution, hey, there may be something greater going on here than just somebody to try and sign on and place a $5 bet on the Super Bowl or whatever else. We also, I think it's important to note, and I apologize, I didn't say this in the presentation, we do yearly education onsite on the campuses, which actually is almost as critical as the product itself because when they're hearing it from a third party that is an expert in this arena, that explains how this technology works and the pitfalls of starting to engage in the gambling activity, you know, the consequences that can happen, it seems to resonate. Or when it is coming from us going in and doing this one-on-one, and that's all part of what they get is onsite education from us in an ongoing basis. When we, when they sign up to use Pro Abet, they also get the education component that really has the feedback that we've received from the universities who are live. They say that has had as much impact as anything else and that this is real and that there is a way to check this and that it's just not worth becoming a Google alert for the rest of your life on betting on your own team or just betting on anything and getting tied up in some sort of a betting scandal. So we've had really positive feedback about that and that's one of the things that for the pretty low cost of them signing up to use this product, they get that ongoing integrity monitoring with this on a daily basis as well. So it's, it's really been good hearing that feedback. The conference that signed up first that has utilized this product for the longest is the SEC and they have, it's helped them construct ways to kind of formulate their new messaging and their new education modules that they have to do from the NCAA compliance perspective. And so we're real happy with how that's gone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, any other questions? Mr. Heap? No, not seeing any. We really thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much and look forward to fielding any questions. Executive Director Moore has my contact information should anything, you know, come up after the fact. Happy again to speak with anybody about what we're out there trying to do to solidify the integrity and compliance space in the sports betting industry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will move on now to item 5B, prop bets. Is that you, Charlie, or Nick?
Yes, thank you, President Broussard. Again, sports wagering, prop bets and harassment of athletes. Proposition bets or prop bets are wagers placed on specific events or outcomes within a game or match, often unrelated to the final results. These can include bets of individual player performances, specific plays, or even off-field occurrences. The NCAA, National Collegiate Athletic Association, and the University of Wyoming have both expressed concerns with the harassment of student athletes. And it is their belief that the potential for harassment is increased due to prop bets being offered via online sports wagering. Commissioners, in your packet and supplied to you, we have a few public comments. We received some, one from Caesars Sportsbook. We also have one from the Sports Betting Coalition that was submitted to us. I believe we may have someone online that would like to speak to this or a few people online joining us that would like to speak to this as well. In your packet, commissioners, you have a memo that Mr. Steinberg put together and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read that memo. If you would like me to read it for you, I can sure do that. There's some other information about sports betting and different things that are going on in the country that have been added into your packet as well. There's a few solutions here. Well, I need to maybe change that and reframe it. You know, there's, there's some different directions that people are going. One of them is to limit, eliminate prop betting. Other solutions, do it, you know, maybe not as broad-reaching. But I think the ultimate problem we have here, and again, if you read Mr. Steinberg's conclusion there, is the problem is the harassment of the student athletes. In horse racing and on the paramutual side of the house, we do not allow for any type of harassment of the folks at the racetrack. We don't have anything specific in rules if someone is found to be harassing a student athlete to where those could be necessarily banned from wagering. And that may be a direction that we need to go. And look at that. And this may be a dual kind of a situation to where we look at the actual wagering, but also look at the harassment piece of it as well. If you, if you look at the harassment side of it, it would be a situation where we would promulgate a rule that would address that. And how that would happen would be, for instance, let's use the University of Wyoming. If they had identified a problem, they would, and again, I'm speculating how this would work. They would investigate it, they would review it, they would submit that to us, then our agents would review it, and then it would be as simple as picking up the phone and sending a message to the sportsbooks that that individual needs to be eliminated from wagering. Now, there's a flip side of that. Where's that person going to go? Is he going to quit wagering? Probably not. So guess what? We've then now driven those folks to, back to the illegal market, which has been kind of the reasoning behind authorizing sports wagering to get it under regulatory oversight. So in your packet, you have the Ohio solution. There's a solution that Iowa took. And then there's some additional possibilities. What I would love to see, commissioners, is give us some direction, how you would like to proceed on this. If you, if banning prop betting, I think it's as simple as, it's, that's a fairly simple process for us. It does not, at least I believe, it does not require a rule change. That is an internal policy that could be made, made very quickly. But on the other hand, then I, you, there's, in this business that we deal with, whether it's paramutual, skill game world, sports wagering, gambling, you know, we deal with a very small percentage of people that are violating. And so what that means is there's a lot of really good people out there that are doing it the right way. So do you want to penalize those? These are some policy discussions and decisions that you all need to make. If you have any questions, I would sure answer those.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have questions regarding prop bets? Commissioner Curry, you got a question?
Mr. President, does this, in the Ohio solution, did it ban just the in-state, the residents within the state of Iowa from prop betting or did it allow everybody in the United States to, it wouldn't let anybody bet totally on nothing for the state, any of the colleges?
The Iowa solution, what it appears to me from this, and if Mr. Steinberg was available, and I apologize for him, he had had a plan to be out today, but I believe this is just strictly on the university, but I will, University of Iowa and Iowa State. But I will follow up with that and get that information for you.
Yeah, I was, did I say Iowa? I meant the Ohio solution.
I'm sorry, the Ohio solution. It, the Ohio solution, as it reads here, it's both in-state and out-of-state.
Thank you.
But as, as I see it, an Iowa resident can vote on or can bet on others, other collegiate athletes from Iowa. So they've only banned the Iowa schools, not other schools, so.
Right. And that has been a solution that seems to be one of the more popular. I mean, in several states, you cannot wager, period, on college athletics.
That exists and?
And those are a lot, quite a few states have that, have that situation. I don't have that number in front of me, but I do know from my experience that that is out there. Then other states have gone to where they're only eliminating prop betting on their in-state wagering. So there's quite a few different ways to go. One of the things, while this is a problem and this is a concern that this commission needs to continue to look at, right now, there's no prop betting being made on college athletics in the state of Wyoming currently today. Because there's, they're, they do, I think, I think it's only on football and basketball and those are not in season currently. So the rush to fix, if this is fixing a problem, is not as big of a rush right at this moment as it would be in another month and a half, two months.
Thank you. Yes, Sandy?
So just administratively, can this be solved by rule or would there have to be legislation?
President Broussard, Representative Newsom, thank you. This would be, you know, if you wanted to make a policy decision to eliminate prop betting, it's a very simple process at this point. It would be as easy as picking up the phone and or, and changing our catalog. It's as simple as that, again, the way I understand it. So it's a fairly, it would be a quick process if you made that policy decision. I think ultimately, you would want to pursue it in rules to where it was clear as well.
So did, is, so it can be done at the commission level, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes, President Broussard, yes.
And there are examples of states that have taken all collegiate prop bets off of their, the ability to bet on collegiate athletes, is that what?
President Broussard, yes, that is correct. There are some states, there's, there's a, there's a real, I mean, there's no cut-and-dried direction that we're seeing. And again, for me, you know, in looking at this, you know, how much of this is, is being affected by the prop betting? Is the harassment, you know, because there's just harassment? And we definitely need to deal with that. I think that would be appropriate to deal with that. So, and some of the data, I know we've seen a lot of data from different, different colleges. We've seen a lot of information from the sportsbooks. If you, you look at your, the public comments that we've received, you know, some of the data seems to be, from my point of view, seems to be a little bit conflicting as well. So if you'd like, obviously, I think we do have, hasn't anyone joined to make any public comments? Maybe hear from those folks as well, whether it's the University of Wyoming onboard or from any of the sportsbooks?
President Broussard, if anybody in the gallery wants to speak on this, if you just raise your hand, I can move you over.
Is there anyone in the room that's representing the sportsbooks? Anybody who'd like to?
So if I could just make a couple of comments for the, I wouldn't mind more examples from one end to the other on the spectrum, but I'd also like to see our, our existing harassment rules as it regards to the paramutual and then take a look at those as a body and then decide what we, maybe that'll give the commission some inspiration. Anything they'd like to add to that? Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Mr. President, just to me, I mean, this is really a naughty issue. But to me, you know, the other aspect we probably should look at is the ability of law enforcement, say campus police or, you know, wherever the resident who's doing the harassment lives, you know, how are they equipped to prosecute those kind of, if it's a crime, those kind of crimes? So, you know, you kind of hate to, what I see from this gaming alliance letter is they're, they're worried you're driving the gamblers back into illegal gambling. And I think that's not really the issue here, but it is a side effect of what we're, you know, our possible action here. And that's not what we want to achieve, but you know, really, I think it's a law enforcement issue more than a commission policy issue. Thank you. you.
Okay, that's the end of that topic then. No, okay, is that our time limit? All right, so I guess it's, it's a, it's a big complicated question. If we have to define harassment, then we have to pass it on to law enforcement, who then, you know, if we make harassment, quote unquote, illegal, then, I know we have a law enforcement commissioner who may have something to say, but I, we then hand the bag over to law enforcement in whatever jurisdiction. It could be in New Jersey that someone's harassing a Wyoming student. So, yeah, it gets way more complicated than us just making a rule. Any, anybody out there wants to comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. President, I tend to agree with Commissioner Schiffer. At this point of the game, if the University of Wyoming, is that the only college besides our junior colleges, if no comment from them and guards are being harassed, or harassment?
President Broussard, Commissioner Currie, yes, the University of Wyoming is, is the only university that's reached out to us.
You know, they do have the capability within their campus police and, and local law enforcement, sheriff's department, police department, that if somebody is harassed, threatened, whatever, for missing a layup or whatever, or not scoring a touchdown, I think that would be incumbent upon the University of Wyoming to take that, that threat or harassment against that student, right to the campus police, and let them deal with it appropriately to the resources they have at this point.
Yeah. So Commissioner Rithaler, you have your hand up? You'd like to say something?
Yes. First, I got to apologize. I've been fighting with my Zoom meeting. I've been on listening to, to the presentation. My big question is, if Wyoming says, no, we don't have prop betting, can New Jersey or another state come and bet on a Wyoming player, though?
President Broussard, Commissioner Rithaler, the way I understand it, that would be no. We would be not, we would not be offering prop bets in our catalog, therefore, no one would be able to make prop bets on the University of Wyoming.
Okay, so when, when we, when we say no prop betting, we eliminated anybody betting on anything in Wyoming legally, correct?
President Broussard, Commissioner Rithaler, I believe that is correct, and I can follow up for sure with you on that.
Excuse me, President Broussard, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So that would prevent them from, Wyoming account holder from wagering in Wyoming, but if they were in New Jersey and New Jersey didn't have that prohibited, they could bet in New Jersey on Wyoming college sports. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Rithaler, go ahead.
Yes, President Broussard, that was my question. We haven't isolated the university or any of our, our people from the harassment and the, whatever goes with the prop betting. Thank you.
President Broussard, we also have a Mr. Ward who would like to speak as well.
Mr. Ward, if you'd like to say something, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director, appreciate you allowing me to speak today. My name is Scott Ward. I am with the Sports Betting Alliance. The Sports Betting Alliance is a trade association that consists of Fanatics Betting and Gaming, Bet MGM, FanDuel, and DraftKings, all leading sports books in the nation and in Wyoming. We submitted a formal response to this request on May 8th. That letter is in your packet, and I would encourage you to read that. But, you know, let me, it, it goes without saying, but let me say it because it's important. We strongly oppose harassment of players, certainly, and even more so when that moves into illegal harassment of players. And we support the idea that we need to address harassment of players, both collegiate, collegiate and professional. Our position on the request from the NCA is while we support the, the honorable goal of reducing harassment, we're not sure that simply banning prop bets on collegiate players would do that. And frankly, it may actually undermine the NCA's goal of increased protection for health, safety, and well-being of student athletes. That's because, as Director Moore alluded to in his opening remarks, these bets simply go to the legal market. They are in the illegal market now, and if folks in Wyoming want to bet on Wyoming props, they'll simply do it in the illegal market. Let me take a step back, because I know there were some questions about how this all works across state borders, and so let me address that directly. As a result of the Supreme Court's ruling in 2018, overruling the federal passable law, that ruling, 10th Amendment ruling, states have the right to decide for themselves what to do within their own borders on sports betting. So that means that each state writes their own rules. Wyoming legalized it, other states have not. Wyoming has particular rules to the state of Wyoming that New Jersey or others, as you mentioned, may not. So anything you do today, or in the future on this issue, would only affect somebody who is actually within the four corners of the state of Wyoming when they try to place a bet. It would not affect somebody in New Jersey or other states, and certainly would not affect those who are using the legal market to make place bets on Wyoming or Wyoming props. If you have not, I would encourage you to, to look at Mr. Steinberg's report. I think it's, it's a, a well-written report that lays out the various options. But I, but I'd like to point out some of the statements in that report that he said, that when the commission staff spoke to the NCA, they were not able to provide any data that a prop bet ban actually lessened harassment. Further, in the conversations that the commission staff, according to the report, had with the nearest to Wyoming, there were some, there were some very vile examples of harassment, which are, which are deplorable, but none of those were related to sports betting. And so what, what Mr. Steinberg does and concludes is that, that the commission should get to the underlying issue, which is harassment of players, and then how to do that. The problem with, with a, with a prop ban is you remove a tool that you would have as a commission with the legal market to root out integrity issues and root out other problems, including harassment. So the legal market is licensed and, and works with you as the commission. We're licensed by you. We work with you, and we work with the professional leagues and, and the, the NCA and others to, we're all incentivized to protect the integrity and root out bad actors. The illegal market is not, and that's where these bets go when you ban them. Mr. Steinberg attached a USA Today article, which is in your packet, and I, I think it's a lession of the point I'm trying to make here, so I wanted to spend a little bit of time on that. So in that article, it's, it's related to professional athletes, which, which Mr. Steinberg correctly points out, is, is as big or bigger problem in terms of harassment as for college. But it, it cites six professional baseball players, three from the San Francisco Giants, three from the Arizona Diamondbacks, who all are, are talking about issues of harassment they received related to betting. What, the reason I'm bringing this up is that, of course, the San Francisco Giants are in California. There is no legal betting in the state of California, college, professional whatsoever. Arizona does have legal betting. So of the six instances cited in this article, and this is from last month, three clearly were occurring in the illegal market, whereas three may have been occurring in the, in the, in the legal market in Arizona. We don't know. It doesn't provide that detail. But again, does a, does a ban actually do anything when these betting, these bets are still occurring and harassment's still occurring from the illegal market? The other part of this article that I think is really interesting, and a lesson of the point, is that the article talks about a gentleman named Ben Pats, who was actually convicted, related to, in a federal court, related to harassment he was, he was making with athletes. The, the activity in question occurred in 2019, and the article talks about Mr. Pats threatening, very vile stuff, by the way, just, just super disgusting stuff, threatening members of the teams, the following teams, the Chicago White Sox, the Tampa Bay Rays, the Atlanta Braves, the San Diego Padres, the Oakland Athletics, the Cleveland Indians, the, the Baltimore Orioles, and Kansas City. In 2019, every single one of those teams played in a state without legal betting. So whether he was in New Jersey or there was legal betting in 2019, he was harassing players in states that had no legal betting. So, so there was a ban on betting in those states, and it still didn't stop that harassment, notably not in this article, but if you look more into Mr. Pats and into the indictment, he also harassed, in part of that indictment, he harassed members of the Pepperdine men's basketball team over a game they played against the University of San Francisco, two teams based in California, where no legal betting has occurred. He also harassed the members of the Oregon Ducks football team, where there is no, they do not allow college prop betting in the state of Oregon. So point being, simply banning these things doesn't really go to the root of the problem with, with harassment. I'm going to, one more story, and then I'll close, because I think it's just happened, and I think it's, again, a lesson of this point. You may have seen or heard about Givante Porter, who was an NBA player who was found a few months ago to have, for lack of a better term, and I'll, you know, skip the details, taking a dive in NBA games related, so that, so that prop bets on him would hit the under. He pleaded guilty yesterday in federal court, and as part of those documents that were revealed, it came out that the reason he did this was because he had gotten in deep with illegal bookies, and those illegal bookies convinced him to affect the integrity of the game, to help pay off his debts. This is a story as old as time, right? Athletes getting in deep with illegal bookies, and that affects it. But the reason I bring this up, and the reason why it's important in this context, is that the, that if there was not legal prop betting on the NBA, we never would have caught this. The reason it was caught was because the legal market for prop bets in the NBA saw anomalies in the lines related to these types of bets, and forwarded that to law enforcement who investigated it, and then that resulted in, in convictions. So illegal betting occurring with illegal bookies was caught and found later because the legal market found it and, and stopped it. When I talk about, we're not sure that it really goes to the root of the problem, but you remove tools, this is what I'm talking about. The legal market is incentivized to find these things and to work with you to stop them. If you simply remove the bets, we have no insight, and you have no insight. So I'll close with that. We thank you for your time. You know, we look forward to addressing this. We'd love to find a way to address player harassment, both on the collegiate and professional level. I look forward to working with the commission on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't, don't go too far. I have a, I know I have a question. In regard to the operators, if, if there's known harassment, is that something you guys have procedures and policies to handle from the operator's perspective?
Mr. President, I apologize. I can't, I can't see who's asking me the question, but, so I'll just direct it to, to the president. But, so if we are informed to, to ban a player because of a particular issue, we, we do that. You know, the, the difficulty here is, is not lost on us, just as it was not lost on the commission, as you spoke about it. You know, what is harassment? Who has the ability to investigate that and determine it? We, we don't have, you know, there's no chat function on, on a sports book. We don't have access to the DMs between a better on Instagram or whatever, and so, so we simply don't know what this activity is. But if it is brought to our attention, and a regulator tells us to ban these folks, we absolutely would do that.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Bow.
For those who don't know, Charlie sends the commission stuff to keep us educated. So over the months, we've received a lot of stuff on sports betting, and I'll read one article or view one video, and I'll think, yeah, we should ban prop bets. Then I'll, I'll read another article, and, and I think, well, maybe not. And one thing's become clear to me is, you know, I have not been able to develop a clear direction on this, but there is a national debate and a national discussion ongoing right now about the propriety of prop bets, not only within the NCAA, but within professional sports and so forth. So, Mr. President, my preference would be to let that national discussion, that national debate play out a little bit more, and see if we can gain a clear, clear direction as to what is the best approach with this. Because as of today, I, I don't have, and I'm usually very opinionated, as folks know, I don't have a clear opinion on what way to go. And so that's what I would like to do, Charlie, is, or Mr. Director, is continue to monitor the information and, and what folks are doing in other states, and what the feds are doing if they ever do anything, and, and then come back to this, and so forth. But right now, today, as I sit here, I don't have a good direction to go, and, and I've told you that on, on the phone, that I go both ways. So that's my horse manure thoughts on this subject, Your Honor.
Thank you. Horse man, horse manure is useful. Do we have any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Charlie.
President Broussard, just to follow up with the comment of Commissioner Bow, the, the national groups are having these discussions, and, you know, there's, the consensus at this point appears to be how to, how to approach this, and kind of which direction. They're still trying to sort through this. There is some discussion, maybe federally, there may be, may be an action that would come forth. I don't, I don't know how that would work out, but there has been that discussion. And the Sports Betting Regulators Association, which I am chairman of, has had this at the top of their list of discussion points and discussions and, and comments, and so we'll keep you abreast if that's the direction you would like to go. I, I think what President Broussard had mentioned, you know, let's get some more examples, let's get some more information, continue on this, this road, if that's the pleasure of the whole commission. And I also noticed that, that Commissioner Rithaler has his hand up as well, too.
So as, as I see it, we're, we don't want to conflate the two issues. One is harassment, which could be pros, amateurs, anybody. And the second one is if we, we do something rule-wise for collegiate athletes. So I think those are two. And I know Mr. Steinberg has given us examples of prop bet limits, but maybe we should have examples of harassment, not only our own, but if there's other states that are doing that, so we can get our head around it, like Commissioner Bow said. Commissioner Rithaler, if you'd have a comment, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Broussard. Might sound pretty flippant, but I'm gonna, Director Bow kind of said it best. I, it seems like anymore, when you have illegal activity, we can't handle it, so the best way to do is legalize it, and then maybe we got a better shot at it. So am I hearing it right? If one state does it, we pretty much open the can of worms for it happening all over the country, correct? And that's why I asked my question, so to stop harassment at the University of Wyoming, we're not going to do that. So I kind of like Mr. Commissioner Bow's idea, just kind of see what all shakes out, and how the rules do come out. So that would be my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, I think at this point, if we made something, a, a rule regarding harassment, we wouldn't, we don't know enough to know what that, that's going to affect down the road. How, how do we enforce it if it's over the state lines? How do we, if someone harasses from another state? So I think we just need, we need to gather some information on what the implications are of different rules, and what other states are doing that's working and not working. All right, do we have any hands up anywhere? Should we move on? All right. If it's okay with the commission, we will move on to item seven.
So President Broussard, as we've done in the consent list, we eliminated item number six, which was skill-based amusement games, and like you said, we are moving on to item seven. At this point, I would maybe recommend looking at going into an executive session to-
For item seven?
Prior to, after item six, prior to item seven, yes.
Okay.
And you should have your sheet.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we go into executive session to, for a discussion regarding items eight A and 11 B.
President Broussard, the motion would be to go into executive session pursuant to 164405A, Roman numeral at nine, which would receive information, client-privileged information. Commissioners, we would need a motion, we would need a second, we would need a vote. We are going into executive session to discuss item number eight A and item number 11 B. If the public would please vacate the room, so we can deal with that. We need the vote. We have a motion. We need the vote. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Curra, any discussion? Hearing none. We will vote. All in favor of going to executive session, say aye.
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 If you're opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. At the moment, we are going into executive session. Charlie, question?
Am I still with you?
I think they cut us out.
You and I are still here.
We're here, but I don't think we can hear them.
I'll be calling you both on, or all three of you on the phone here in just a second.
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know.
Thanks for your time.
We'll commence the meeting here momentarily. Commissioner Bruce, President Broussard, would you like me to do a roll call?
Yeah, let's quickly do a roll call and get going.
Okay, President Broussard.
Here.
Vice President Cavelo.
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson is absent today. Commissioner Bowe. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schiffer.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rinnhaler.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kura. Commissioner Kura had to step out of the room momentarily. Commissioner Francisco.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wildcat is absent. Senator Driscoll is absent today. And Representative Newsom is here, thank you. And Governor's liaison, Tom Lebanon, is absent today as well. We do have a quorum still.
Okay, since we have a quorum, we'll move on to item number seven, 307 Horse Racing LLC Discussion Considerations for Possible Action.
President Broussard, item 7A is a request received from 307 Horse Racing. The request was received on May 21st, 2024, for the potential opening of a new OTB at 699 UNT Drive in Green River. Included in the submission was the letter requesting a new location, the operational plans, updated simulcast permit to include this location for '24, '25, and '26, the operators' financials and location revenue projections, rendered drawings of the floor plan, Sweetwater County Resolution 24-03-CC-01 granting county approval, the lease agreement with the building owner, full circle realty, and a host facility application. In your packet, you'll see all of those attachments are included.
Tell me what number we're on, what packet and page number?
66 on the digital one.
66. All right, thank you.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
307 is requesting approval to open an OTB located at 699 UNT Drive in Green River. The facility will offer alcohol sales and a lounge that includes the simulcasting area. This location is slated for 100 HHR terminals. Sweetwater County Commission approval has been obtained with conditions. No more than 100 terminals may be located in the facility without county commission approval to exceed that. It may not be transferred in any manner without written approval of the county commission. The resolution is good for three years and must be renewed 60 days prior to the expiration.
Thank you.
307 Horse Racing provided all the required documentation, and their request is consistent with other submissions for OTB locations. Additionally, 307 Horse Racing holds a permit to offer paramutual wagering and simulcasting in the state of Wyoming and remains in good standing through 2026. Chapter 10 of the Wyoming Gaming Commission rules govern simulcasting within the state. Chapter 10E states that the commission shall use the following decisional criteria in approval or disapproval of an application for simulcast operations: the operator's general benefit to the state of Wyoming, the operator's general benefit to the state of Wyoming's horse racing industry, the operator's integrity, individual and corporate conduct, criminal history, betting and gaming industry conduct, the operator's credibility, the accuracy of the feasibility studies, experience and expertise in the operations of simulcasting. 307 has met the criteria for their current operations. The, let's see, an initial walkthrough was attempted. At this time, though, the building was kind of closed. I think it's, needs some renovation, so we weren't able to do an initial walkthrough. Sweetwater County currently has 567 approved terminals, 376 active terminals between Rock Springs and Green River. Green River currently has two approved locations, operating a combined 102 terminals. This location is located roughly one mile to operating a combined 102 terminals. This location is located roughly one mile to the south of the nearest other location. I would stand for any questions on this one, if there are any.
Thank you. We'll, at this moment, we'll entertain a motion to approve this location.
We're talking about item 7A, Mr. President?
That's correct, item 7A. Thank you, Commissioner Bowe. Any second, do we have a second?
Hold a second.
Commissioner Schiffer? Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Commissioners, do we have questions for 307? Anything? So, Mr. Ridgeway, were you, were you at the commission meeting, the county commission meeting?
President Bouchard, Kyle Ridgeway, President 307 Horse Racing. Yes, I participated at the county commission meeting with Sweetwater County.
So, just a general feeling, is, was there any discussion regarding the number of OTBs or any of that in that, in that, from that body?
What I would say in general is, you know, most of these counties are wanting to impose conditions now. We've been doing that on, I think, all of them since Douglas. So, this would be like the sixth or seventh location where we have some conditions from a county. Specifically around this one, we provided information in our saturation study about the economic development to come in Sweetwater County, specifically around the Trona Mine project. The county commission meeting was interesting in that that project was presented right before us as the agenda item. So, the company was there presenting the economic impact, talking about the amount of people. The location that we're doing in Green River is the movie theaters that were just closed within the last year. Our organization has a relationship with the movie palaces. You know, as part of 307 First, we know a lot of the entrepreneurs, the movie palaces are locally owned. They consolidated their movie screens to Rock Springs. So, Green River has nothing but a, you know, somewhat rundown movie theater that needs rehabilitated. And so, part of the reason the county felt comfortable with some conditions was because, A, we were willing to agree to conditions, B, we were going to rehabilitate a facility that that community needed for a form of entertainment, especially for the people that will be coming, temporary workers that may be there the next five to seven years, plus the new people moving there, gives them a way to retain tax revenue from those temporary workers that are in town as well. We've seen that at a lot of our locations. Douglas is another one where a lot of our customers are pipeline workers that are temporarily in Wyoming, those kinds of things. And then, and then C, so they're going to get the rehabilitated facility. We have conditions, so they have some local control for us to report to them, and then they felt comfortable that, you know, we know it's going to take a little bit to do a construction on that facility and get it where it needs to be. We're hoping we can have it open spring next year, spring of 2025, assuming we get approved. And then, I know they're going to start work on that project in Green River sometime in 2025, where construction workers are going to start showing up. So, those were the reasons why they felt comfortable, but there was discussion about saturation in the county and concern around that for sure.
Thank you. I know it's not your job to say that what's negative, but I appreciate it. Any other questions, concerns for 307? All right, if I don't, anybody in the gallery, anybody on Zoom with a hand up? All right, not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving item 7A, say aye.
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 If anyone's opposed, say no. Okay, sounds like you passed. We'll move on to item 7B now.
Mr. President, item 7B is a request received from 307 Horse Racing. The request was received on May 29th, 2024 for the consideration of a potential opening of a new OTB located at 3310 Ridge Road in Cheyenne, Wyoming. Along with the request, we received the letter requesting the new location, the Cheyenne's, second Cheyenne location, operational plans, updated simulcast permits, including this location for '24, '25, and '26, operator financials and revenue projections, rendered drawings of the floor plan, Laramie County Resolution 24-04-16-12 granting county, county approval, a lease agreement with the building owner, which is the parent company, Works. 307 is seeking approval to open a second OTB in Cheyenne at 3310 Ridge Road. The facility will offer alcohol sales and a lounge that includes the simulcasting area. This location is slated for 125 HHR terminals. Laramie County Commission approval has been obtained with conditions. No more than 125 HHR terminals may be located in the facility. It may not be transferred in any manner without written approval of the county commissioners. The resolution is good for five years. It must be renewed 60 days prior to expiration, and they must provide yearly updates to the county commission of the operations and tax revenues generated, et cetera. 307 Horse Racing has provided all of the required documentation, and the request is consistent with other submissions. Additionally, 307 holds a permit to offer paramutual wagering in the state of Wyoming and remains in good standing through 2026. The same decisional criteria for approval or disapproval applies to this one as the last one. Do you want me to read that again, or no?
No, that's good. Anybody?
The, Laramie County currently has eight approved locations with 1,208 approved terminals. Currently, 710 of those are active. At the time of this report, the Swan Ranch project for Wyoming Horse Racing had not opened. So, we have about, I'm going to say, 950 active there now, as of today. Cheyenne currently has six approved locations within city limits. The ones within city limits are operating about 800 of the active terminals. And in your packet, there's a map of the city that shows the layout of all of the locations. The one highlighted in red is this proposed location. And I would stand for any questions on this one as well.
All right, thank you, Nick. So, at this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve 7B.
Can I make that motion? If we approve item 7B?
Thank you, Commissioner Bowe. Do we have a second? That was Riddhala?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Reuben. So, we have a motion and a second, and we'll open it up for discussion. Any discussion? Any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Bowe?
307, I wanted to tell you that I appreciated the narrative that you provided with the application regarding your need for a second location within Cheyenne. And I also appreciated the description of your current operations in Cheyenne, because frankly, I had no idea. And it's kind of an example of where historic horse racing not only helps live horse racing, but it can help other types of entertainment industries within a community. So, I appreciate that. I don't have a question, Mr. President, I just wanted to make that comment known.
Thank you. So, if you don't mind, I'll ask you the same question. Are you feeling, is there some dissent, or is there amongst the commissioners that we, we don't get to attend the commission meeting? I mean, we could, but I don't. The county commission meetings, I'm just wondering if there's a shift or some current of negativity about...
President Broussard, I did, in the cover letter, I provide, provide some citations to the articles specifically related to the commission meeting in Laramie County. I think there's significant concern in that county about how much there is and what it looks like. That's part of the reason for the conditions and the machine cap that we have. The commissioners felt comfortable with, just like Commissioner Bowe described, what our project is and the specific need for us to have a second facility, given the capacity that we have at the current facility. Ideally, we wouldn't need to do that. We could have just had 500 games in that facility, but that's not what we chose to do for that particular community. So, I would say, yeah, there is concern from the commissioners in that county, but they felt comfortable with us as an operator and the, you know, the information we were able to provide about our existing operation and the need for expansion. We did go through a zoning process as well with the city of Cheyenne, which was extensive and did neighborhood notifications. As to our specific project, there were no objections raised at a city level or in the neighborhood about the change for that facility. As far as the city's concerned, I think you could say it's mixed from the city council's perspective. I provided some citations to some articles about personal tours we gave of the city council members to our existing facility, along with local legislators. We've done that as well. So, Cheyenne, much like Casper, is a place where everybody's got big eyes and is wondering, you know, where this goes. But we have gone through a better part of nine months plus for this particular location of public outreach to obtain the approvals that we obtained. So, I can't speak to how they want to handle any future projects, but they felt comfortable with this particular project and us as an operator.
Thank you, Mr. Adrey. Any other questions for 307? Anyone up there on Zoom land? Anyone out in the gallery? Not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving item 7B, say aye.
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 If there's anyone opposed, say no. All right. We will move on to item eight.
President Broussard, thank you. Item number eight, Cowboy Racing LLC Discussion Consideration and Possible Action on the following matter. A, 2024 through 2026 live event application. The race dates that have been, that are requested, for '24, they're talking October 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th, four days, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, four days, 18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st, 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th of October. For 2025, and again, this is in your packet, commissioners and the public, June, for 2025, you'd be looking at June 6th, 7th, and 8th, 13th, 14th, and 15th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 27th, 28th, and 29th, and July 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. For 2026, June 5th, 6th, and 7th, 12th, 13th, and 14th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 26th, 27th, 28th, and July 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Today, the commission will hear from the applicant, receive updates from the staff. All of the necessary information has been received to consider the live event, with the exception of the certified report from the licensed surveyor detailing the grade measurement and distances to be run. In addition, the rules state that the permit shall not be issued until the track is completed and surveyed, and a certified report is received and approved by the commission. As of this date, as I'd already stated, we have not received, nor has the track been completed. Once the tracks and grounds are completed, the commission should receive the certified report, and at that time, they could, they should consider the application. As the rules read, a permit shall not be issued until the track is completed and surveyed. All of the above steps have been completed. We will schedule a third-party independent inspection, which does require the agency to do contracting and scheduling. This is referred to as the racetrack safety inspection, consisting of the racetrack and the permitted event grounds. The inspection shall consist of the cushion, subsurface, base banking, turns, starting gate, so on and so forth. Commissioners, at this point, I turn it back to you. In your packet, you do see all this information I've shared with you.
Okay, thank you. So, Nick, the question, I guess, in front of us is, is the application complete? That sounded like it wasn't from, from Charlie.
So, we have received and completed review of the operational plans. We've completed the background investigations for the three main principles. Trying to pull it up here. In your, in your drive, you've all received the entire packet, which is 550 pages total. In the simplified packet, you just received the 18-page, my 18-page narrative report. At this time, the only thing that we are missing is the certified report from the licensed surveyor that Director Moore had mentioned. According to the rules, without that, it's, it would be classified as incomplete.
Thank you. Do we have, you guys want to make a statement before we get going? Okay, go ahead. You have the floor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Scott.
Push the button till it turns to green.
Oh, sorry. Good morning, Mr. President. We appreciate the opportunity to be heard this morning. My name is Scott Derudy, and I'm appearing on behalf of Cowboy Racing LLC, who has the application pending before you. I personally am an executive with First Racing. I've been there over 20 years, working in the racing and gaming business. We at First Racing, as you know from the application, are an equity partner in Cowboy Racing LLC. We're thrilled to be here in Wyoming. We're thrilled to be working with our local partners to develop Thunder Plains as a premier first-class racing facility in Laramie County. We, we have a little bit of a, of a chicken and egg problem here in terms of approval. As we just heard, everything has been submitted, everything has been approved, but for the completion of the racetrack, that is well underway. Considerable money has been spent already, and we're here today to ask for your support to continue to spend the money we're spending to complete this first-class racing facility. Our ask specifically today is approval of our October 2024 race dates, conditional approval of our application for a live event permit, and conditional approval for the application of simulcasting and HHR. What we are not here today is asking for you to issue a permit today, because our racetrack is not completed. But the investment we've made since we originally submitted this application in January is in the millions of dollars. And we would like some good faith assurance from this commission that when we finish what we said we're going to do, when we finish the racetrack construction, at which point we'll be in, you know, high seven figures, potentially eight figures of investment, that the license will be forthcoming. Now, we've assembled today the entire Cowboy Racing team, but out of respect for your time, I'm not going to introduce each person, and we're also not going to rehash the presentation that was made in March and all the background and vision and, and the team of experts we've assembled. We've already talked about all that. Obviously, if there are questions today about any of that, we have the team here to answer those questions. But what we, what we really want to focus on is receiving that conditional approval. We're not asking for a permit. There's a rule that says you can't issue a permit, you know, that's open for debate, but we don't even need to have that debate, because that's not what we're asking. It's well within this commission's authority to do what supports racing and gaming in Wyoming, and we believe approval of this would, would, would support our investment that we're making. Now, I could sit here and tell you about all the work we've done on the racetrack, but I think it'll be much more effective for you to see it with your own eyes. We have a short video presentation. When I say short, I promise it is short. It's a minute and 42 seconds, so it won't go on too long, but we'd like you to take a look at what we've done.
You acted out.
President Broussard, the video has audio, but the way this is connected, you're not going to hear the audio. You'll just see the video.
Oh, that's the best part. Oh, that's the best part. The video quality was obviously diminished in the transfer process, so it's much more glitchy than it should be.
Commissioners, just to make note, we received this yesterday evening, I believe it was, and, you know, we haven't even had a chance to review this yet. I haven't.
Again, I apologize for the quality of that display, but I think the point still comes across. The racing oval is well underway. We have every intention of being ready by October with our racetrack and our facility. Now, is that aggressive timing? Of course, it's aggressive. Will we meet that timing? We're here prepared to do everything we need to do to meet that timing. Obviously, you know, things come up that we don't control, but as we sit here today, we have a construction schedule that lays out such that we will be ready by October. Now, I want to make sure we're managing expectations. When we say our project will be completed in October, what we are talking about is the part of the project that is necessary to conduct live racing safely and within the regulations that we're required to comply with. That would include a safe racing surface. That would include safe and secure stalls for the horses. Now, those will be temporary. Our permanent backside will not be constructed. It will obviously be very light on public facilities, but everything that the commission needs to regulate and everything that we need to put on a safe racing program are intended to be in place with that, you know, background and with the investment made to get to this point. That is why we're here today, asking you for conditional approval of our applications. I do want to show, if we might, and staff can put up, we just have a couple of more. These are still slides. So this is a schematic of what the facility will look like at opening, again, without a lot of public space or infrastructure. And can you go, please, to the 3D rendering? So the purpose of this, I mean, you saw the video with the racing oval already taking shape. The purpose of this is to show you that it will be pretty lean and mean at opening in October with the temporary stalls and with the racing surface, with some temporary facilities for commission staff, et cetera. So we plan a first-class facility. We plan investment, but to get there takes more time, and that's why we have these somewhat scaled-back plans for October. Now, I'd like to take a minute, again, as I said earlier, we're not going to repeat everything about our experience, about safety, about the vision. You've heard all that before, but what I do want to do today is take just a minute and talk about the intent of the legislature in authorizing simulcasting historic horse racing. Why is this activity allowed in Wyoming? And it's allowed for three primary reasons, all of which are very important. It's allowed to support live horse racing in the state of Wyoming. Everything we do at First Racing and everything we do at Cowboy Racing has a focus on safety first. So when I say supporting live racing, it's implicit that it's supporting safe, regulated live racing in the state of Wyoming. The legislation is also intended to support breeding, and the better quality racing we have, the more wagering on the racing signal, the higher the purses, the more breeding is encouraged. And breeding, as you know, has tremendous economic spin-off effect. So we're trying to support live racing, support live breeding, and it's also important that a key element is investment back in the community. Talk about investment. Again, this is a multi-multi-million-dollar investment in Laramie County. It's not just the racing facility that we're, you know, we're currently constructing. We also have plans for a year-round indoor arena to support other equestrian activities. We have every intention of having year-round facilities for horsemen to stay on site and horses to stay on site. So racing in the summer, other equestrian throughout the year, all of which is something that Laramie County wants and needs. We've submitted previously a letter of application from Laramie County. They're fully supportive of this project. They're fully supportive of what it is we're doing. So those are the key elements that the legislature intended to encourage, and let me just talk about how this group, Cowboy Racing, fulfills that intent. First of all, we're, as I said, proud to be here at First Racing, one of the premier racing companies in the United States, and we talk about the need in Wyoming to run 16 live race days. But we at First Racing have run 418 live race days already in 2024. Of those, 274 race days were run at our premier racetrack, Santa Anita Park in Southern California and Gulfstream Park in Florida. In addition to those race days we've already run, we're projecting to run another 97 race days throughout the balance of the year, again, just at those two facilities, Santa Anita and Gulfstream Park. We know live racing. We do live racing, and the one thing that I haven't ever really heard discussed in Wyoming is when you create quality racing product, you're now not just creating economic incentive and economic driver within the state of Wyoming, but we can take these racing signals around the world for wagering by people in other states and other countries to bring money back in to the state of Wyoming. And my role at First Racing, one of the businesses I run, is called Monarch Content Management, and that is a content, wagering content management business. What we do is we take the racing signals from Santa Anita and Gulfstream Park and the other tracks we own, we package it with tracks we don't own but represent, like Delmar and Monmouth Park, Lone Star Park, Horseshoe Indianapolis. We put that package of wagering rights together, and we go out and monetize it throughout the world. What does that mean? That's just a fancy way of saying we get betting facilities and betting platforms to bet on our content. And the beauty of that is it takes product that's created in Wyoming, and it generates money from outside the state and brings it into the state. And that's what we think when you think about our vision for Wyoming racing. By the way, we understand there are high sea issues currently, and we're not currently exporting in Wyoming. We get all that, so I'm not saying this is going to happen tomorrow, but this is the long-term plan. And as we do that, as we implement that long-term plan, it doesn't have to just be for Thunder Plains. We would welcome the opportunity to work with the other Wyoming racetracks and package all this Wyoming content to go sell to the world. So I believe we're fulfilling the mission of the legislature, and I just want to finally talk about our investment again. Millions of dollars have been spent already on this project. We submitted our application in January. We came here in March before this commission, and we presented our vision, and here we are in July. It's been six months since we submitted our application, and there's still been no action on that application. We're not asking you to issue our permit today, but we're asking you to show us that you support what we're doing, that you support our investment, and give us conditional approval. Not a thing will happen that approval will not take effect until we're done with our racetrack, and we understand that. And that's our ask today. So with that, I'll conclude my comments and open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, Cactus, go ahead.
When you begin your, thank you, Mr. Chairman, when you began your discussion, you say you were here asking for two things, for a live permit and for a simulcast permit. To my knowledge, we have no simulcast permit been presented at this point.
Mr. President, if I might, I believe we have submitted an application for simulcast wagering, and let me touch on why that's important. Again, to give an example from another state, the state of Kentucky, renowned throughout the world for their horse racing industry, when they allow somebody to come in, say, "I'm going to build a racetrack in a couple of years. Let me open my OTB today, and let me start conducting historic horse racing today, and I'm going to use that revenue to fund a racetrack I'm going to build in the future." Now, that's actually pretty common around the country. It might be reasonable for you to do that, but we're not even asking for that. What we're saying is we're already spending the money building the racetrack. Now, why is the simulcast piece important? Because if you don't approve conditionally our simulcast application today, what you're effectively saying we have to do is get our approval conditionally today on our live event permit, finish our construction, which will be in October, then come back to you and say, "We now would like our simulcast application approved." And only then can we go to the county and say, "We have the blessing of the gaming commission. We have a real business here. This isn't just some pie-in-the-sky theory. We have the right to open OTBs. So now, county, let's go through the approval process. Now landlords, let's start working on our lease." It's a long process from starting the discussion to opening an OTB, and that long process involves starting, it requires, in order to start, something from this commission telling the world that you've listened to us, you've seen our plan, and you approve of it. And so that's why we're asking for the simulcast approval today, again, conditioned on completion of the racetrack, conditioned upon floor plans, conditioned upon everything else. We just need something showing the blessing of this commission to go begin the discussions with the county. So I hope that answers the question.
Let me ask a clarification question. Is the status of the simulcasting?
President Broussard, so the commission on January 9th received a application for live paramutual events. To date, the commission has not received a simulcast permit application. They're two separate applications, and without a live event permit, you know, state law requires that we can only issue a simulcast permit after a live event permit is issued. So we don't have a simulcast application.
Mr. President, may I address a point? We're doing something a little bit different, and frankly, we're doing something that, from a business standpoint, is a little bit crazy. We've spent millions of dollars to build a first-class racetrack, and we don't have anything from this commission giving us your blessing. If we were to go and to rent an existing track and say, "Here's our existing track. Here's our lease. We want to start racing there," it would actually be an easier approval process, but how counterintuitive is that? What you should be wanting to encourage is investments of millions of dollars in premier racing facilities, and that's what we're doing. So I want to make sure we don't get too caught up in the minutia of how this application works or that application works. I understand it's important, and we need to always comply with laws and regulations, but let's not lose sight of what it is we're asking. We're asking for your blessing to continue to build the facility we've already invested millions of dollars in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Dan. Commissioner Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Derudy, I kind of have a recollection that at some point, when you owned Gulfstream Park, you all moved that facility to a different location, created a different track.
So, yeah, let me give you the background there. So historically, in Miami, in Gulfstream Park, which, by the way, has a casino, full class-three slots at our track in Gulfstream Park, but unlike many other racetrack casinos around the country that run the minimum amount of racing they need to to support their slots, we're actually going to run over 270 days of racing at Gulfstream and use that slot money to generate the purses to run all that racing. But the way Miami as a marketplace has worked historically is there were, if you go back far enough in time, there were three tracks in Miami, but that's not relevant. More recently, there were two tracks in Miami, Gulfstream Park, which we have owned since 1999, and Calder Racecourse, which was owned by Churchill Downs, which, obviously, the owner of Churchill Downs Racetrack. There were a number of years ago where Churchill Downs effectively closed their racing facility and moved the racing over to Gulfstream Park, and we actually raced sort of both race meets at Gulfstream Park. That allowed Churchill Downs to keep their casino. It allowed us to keep our casino, but it was a consolidation of racing operations and a consolidation of overhead. There has been, and I've read this, and it's a thorn in my side, frankly, there has been misreporting in racing media that we closed a racetrack in Miami. No, we did not. Our racetrack, Gulfstream Park, which we've owned since 1999, has run every day since then and is going to do about 270 days this year.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but my question kind of is, when you began the new Gulfstream Park, I'd like to ask you, what kind of issues did you encounter, beginning from beginning, which I kind of think we're going to see when Thunder Plains opens? I mean, that's what we're trying to get to, is a safe, comprehensive racetrack that we can embrace, which I think everyone is, you know, delighted to hear you're doing, but...
So, again, I apologize for misunderstanding your question earlier, and let me try to address it. The difference in why it's not a perfect analogy is because we're building a racetrack from scratch here, as you just saw, and at Gulfstream, I understand now you're talking about the redevelopment. There was an old Gulfstream grandstand, and we took that down, and we built the newer, more compact, more modern grandstand, which now houses the casino. It was different, though, because there was a transition. We always had the racing surface. By the way, the racing surface at Gulfstream has been renovated and redone a number of times, always in the interest of safety. But it's not entirely analogous because we were already up and running, took down the grandstand while we continued running, put up temporary bleachers while we continued running, and then constructed the new grandstand while we continued running. So it's a little bit different than building a track, you know, out of the ground. But to answer more the substance of your question is, what issues did we encounter? Always, first and foremost, is the safety of the racing surface. We've engaged, Cowboy Racing has engaged some of the top experts in racing. Dennis Moore is our track man overseeing the design and construction of the track. Dr. Mick Peterson, who's renowned for his knowledge on footings and track surfaces, is involved in our project. So we're making every effort to make the track absolutely first-class in terms of safety.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, okay, so let's say you complete construction of Thunder Plains October 1 and with whatever the date is to begin racing two weeks later. Walk me through what you are going to do to be satisfied in your mind and then to us, to assure us that track surface, the layout, the whole thing is going to be safe and capable of running, you know, horses at 35 miles an hour on it. And I'm going to give you a little background. I grew up around Galway Downs, and I remember when they built that track, and for two years, we had rocks coming up through the, you know, from the below up into the surface. So, you know, we got to know that these things aren't... So, you know, we got to know that these things aren't going to be detrimental to us and those things that we're facing at this side.
Mr. President, if I may, I have two, uh, two comments in response to that very good question. First, what we are asking today is conditional approval of our application, with the condition being submission of a certificate of completion and inspection of the racetrack. So nothing happens until you all have satisfied yourself through that third-party survey and certification that the track is completed and completed safely. Um, with, with that background on our request, if I might, I'd like to turn it to my colleague, Jeff Tru, um, to, to address the, um, the steps in the construction. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. And Mr. President and Commissioner Schiffer, my name is Jeff Tru. I'm with, uh, First Technology and, and involved in this project, bringing multiple pieces of the First Racing and Technology, uh, group of companies to bear on this project. But from the get-go, we have been talking to Dennis Moore and Mick Peterson, as, as Scott discussed. And the, the overriding impact of what we're trying to do is to maintain our level of, of safety. I mean, if you have heard about Santa Anita Park and followed what happens at Santa Anita Park, you've seen the, the progress and the level of safety that we now can boast about in, at Santa Anita as well as Gulfstream Park. The people that we're talking about employing here are the same people that are managing those projects. And we've, you know, we're taking steps to do soil tests. We're going to be taking the steps to, in, put in place a safety rail, both inside and outside of the racetrack. We're going to have rails that have come from a, a top racetrack in this country. The, the barns, the, um, the safety aspects of the paddock, the test barn, the, the runout areas, I mean, we're taking, I would say minute steps, um, very detailed steps about where is the wire? What's the distance from the wire to the first pole of the turn? What sort of distances will we run at this racetrack? You know, is it five, we'll be running quarter horses on this track, so there'll be 550 down the front side, we'll be running six, six and a half from the backside chute. We've got a racetrack design that comes from people like Jon Stewart, Dennis Moore, Mick Peterson, and others. It's all about the safety, that we as First Racing wouldn't be involved in this project were we not bringing our own expertise in safety to bear. And many of the things, like it or not, about HISA, we have generated. I mean, we have generated the safety standards at our racetracks that are in use today nationwide. And our results, I think, speak for themselves, and I invite you to, to inquire about that further. But it's, it's a day-to-day project involving dozens of people, literally, to get the project where we want it to be and where you want it to be. And as Scott indicated, you hold the reins on whether we run a racetrack, whether we run a race over that track or not. It's not going to be done until you say it's ready, and we, we fully intend to make it so.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Bull.
Thank you, Mr. President. Why the October race dates? Why not take the summer, the fall, next spring, and get your track up and running and, and do your races in June? Why are we rushing to do the October race dates? Which, October's not the best month for racing in Wyoming as it is. You've, you've compressed your construction season. So my question is, why are we, why are we insisting on the October dates? What's, what's going on there?
Mr. President, if I may, address that question. And, and it's a good question. Let's not, um, lose sight of the reality of business, which is, we're investing millions upon millions of, of dollars. In fact, the number right now is something on the order of $50,000 a day of, if the video wasn't so glitchy, you would have seen, what is it, seven scrapers out on, on the site. Like, we're spending money like a drunken sailor, as the expression goes. We need some reasonable expectation that we're going to be able to generate revenue and generate, um, revenue through simulcasting and through HHR. And so we've already invested the dollars. We bought the land last year. We entitled the land. All that comes with, uh, carrying costs and, and expense and cost of funds. And so we would like, um, your, your approval to move as quickly as we can to get the racing open so that we can start generating revenue.
So the October race dates are just so that then you could qualify for the off-track betting facilities? Is that correct?
Yes, that, that is, that is correct in, in the sense of every race date that's currently run in this state is run for the purpose of generating revenue.
Okay, let me, let me express to you my concern. You know, when you came in here in March, you presented, you did present a premier first-class racing facility. But what we're getting now is the minimum. We're getting a racetrack and some temporary buildings and not much more. And you're asking us to approve the application. Is that the application? Because if we approve that, that's what the state has to live with. And I haven't heard anything today about commitments to go ahead and eventually put in the other amenities which you presented originally. And so we end up with a minimum racetrack, potentially, and I'm not sure that does contribute in any meaningful way to live horse racing in Wyoming. So that's my concern. And I would be much more open to a conditional approval of your application if I knew for sure what the heck you were going to construct, but also if the race dates were halfway reasonable. So second question, if you get a no today, are you ceasing construction or are you going to continue with construction?
Mr. President, um, I'm actually not the person to respond to that question. We do have such a person in the room.
Yes.
Members of the Commission, my honor. Mr. President, members of the Commission, my name is Bill Edwards. I'm president of Edwards Development and Edwards Construction. And, um, I hesitate to get up here because I pay attention to scrapers and fuel and concrete crews and building crews and so on and so forth. Uh, I'm 50 years a general contractor in Wyoming, and in the last 15 years have devoted my career along with my sons strictly to development, primarily residential and commercial construction. We decided to get into this industry because of our Wyoming roots and because we love horses. There's always been a, uh, an inclination towards racing, especially when the Kentucky Derby's on and the Preakness and, and so forth. And, and certainly the economic development, uh, uh, opportunity in terms of, of, of gambling revenues and also the revenues that it promotes for the state. And so how do we combine these things? And, and so we started this process a little over two years ago. So I'm going to just kind of speak from the heart and speak as a, as a Wyoming resident who wants to do this, specifically to your concern, Mr. Bull. Uh, I agree with you. We've compressed this construction schedule to where it worries me.
Yeah.
It worries me very much. I've expressed this to my inner group. And I get the explanation that, well, uh, because of these odd rules that I've had to deal with, which include that, well, we submitted our application in January, that means we have to run a race this year. I'm like, really? Is that the case? So I would ask you, is that the case? If that is not the case.
I hope not. Is that the case, Nick?
President Broussard, members of the Commission, that is not the case.
Oh.
So, for example, uh, going back to 2021, 307 Horse Racing submit, 2021? 2020. 2020, sorry. 307 Horse Racing submitted their application in 2020 for race dates in 2021. They had originally asked for race dates in 2020, but it was kind of the same thing. It was, it was very soon after the application, and there was things that had to be done. They amended their application and removed the 2020 dates and just applied for the dates in 2021. So that, that is not the case.
Thank you, Nick. Carry on.
Well, again, I'm going to not worry about a little egg on my face. That's not what I've been told. And, and so that being the case, certainly, I'd like to push it forward. Uh, I, I consider myself, after a number of years and, uh, of construction in this state, and as well as, I think, holding a pretty good reputation, uh, as one of the better general contractors, that critical paths and construction schedules are of the utmost importance. If given a choice between money and time, which one's the most important? I assume all of you are reasonable people to think about that and realize that time is much more important than money. So we watch that very carefully. Uh, we, we, to your point about anything that's been cut back in terms of what was presented, um, in March, there's nothing that's been cut back, other than there was a promotional video, which I was not totally in favor of, which showed water features, uh, some ballparks, and some other things on the area that we're not constructing now. I don't believe there's anything that you saw today that was presented on that video that isn't, isn't, isn't being built currently.
What about the spectator facilities? I mean, Your Honor, if I may, we're, we're kind of engaging in an exchange here, you know? I thought we were going to have some decent facilities for the spectators, and under this proposal.
Pull up another chair, Ryan.
This proposal, I don't see any. We're talking porta-potties? I mean, what's going on out there, you guys?
Well, what's going on is we're being pushed, compressed, as you said, into a construction schedule that requires those sorts of accepted facilities being temporary facilities. This is not the permanent build-out of this, and that's not our intent. And the, the construction and the cost of this facility is significant. Therefore, we want to, we want to get as much of this up as we possibly can, but we can't swallow the whole, uh, element without some OTB income as well.
Okay.
Which is anticipated across the board, if you will, in other states.
Okay.
Some states has already been reported, allow this process to start without the tracks even being built, being totally supported by OTB. That's not been the case here. We're already millions of dollars into this and ready to spend a similar amount, full bore, all the way till the end of it. October is not a good time. The fall winds start. I'm trying to find days to fly fish in October, and because of the winds bothering me. So I, I'm well aware of that. We've got dust control. We've got wind in Laramie County like Natrona County, like some other counties have. So we've got to be very cognizant of windy days, how's that going to affect the races, and so on and so forth. So we're actually on the same side of, of your concern. However, I want to tell you that there's two terms in construction, and maybe I shouldn't get into this, there's substantially complete, uh, and then there is total completion of a, of a dream and of a project. We will not have full-time grandstands built, probably not even next year. But they do make portable grandstands that cost money to bring in, and that's where spectators will sit. They do make porta-johns, even though we probably will have some sanitary facilities in place by next year. They do make temporary horse barns, which I really am a little concerned about because of the wind, and I'm concerned about, so, so the horse barns will be forthcoming and so forth. But this is what I want to address and, and, and tell everybody. When I do a development, I'm used to dealing with some pretty good handholds as I climb up a wall. This process has been very disconcerting to me, in, in part my own fault, because I've been in the background, and I've let other people take care of things, not that they haven't done their job, but frankly, there's some terminology and some processes that I don't understand. But in March, we left with a pretty high note. We began taking bids on the construction, and things kept getting delayed as far as working with the state. I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm talking about the reality. So I wasn't able to let my contract out to some of my better mass excavation contractors. We lost every one of them. Every one of them picked up other work. We had to scramble in the last six weeks to put together a good crew that I had to go vet, and I'd never met them before, and they're doing a great job, to get started now. It was almost a miraculous thing that we were able to get them right now. So this is not the way I like to build. I liked a much more controlled situation. But outside of that, I'm outside of my typical business bubble. I'm building without approvals. When I do a development, I'm going to go to a planning commission with engineered plans, which we have. I'm going to work with the best possible people that I can, which I assure you we are. I personally am working with Dennis Moore, and I'm telling you, he knows more about racetracks than anybody I've ever talked with. We have traveled to Santa Anita, we have traveled to San Francisco. I was going to go to the Preakness, but I broke a toe and couldn't, couldn't stand walking that far. So we, we, we have been treated royally by First Racing. I tell you, I am so impressed with them and proud to have them as a partner. But as we move forward with our engineered plans, I'm used to going to a planning commission, typically, that sees everything, approves everything, typically they do for us. Then we move on either to county commissioners or city councils, where we have typically three different readings, where there are many plans set out for, for review and so on and so forth. And we get a final approval, which is still basically conditional, because they say, yes, we like your plan, we like your zoning, we like your plat, we like everything you're doing. Now you can actually sell houses and build commercial once you've constructed it according to the specification. And what I'm hearing here is that you have that in place, that we're going to have a surveyor come out, survey everything in place, and, and whatever other concerns there are about the track surface and so on and so forth. But I can't seem to get an approval that gives me a warm and fuzzy feeling of, of, hey, let's move forward, this is done, as if it's a city council, as if it's a county commissioner. And I'm, I need that, and that's what we're asking for today. We're also asking, and now I, I got to tell you, more egg on Bill's face, that we don't have an application for the, the, uh, simulcast.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that shouldn't be a problem still in my book, because one's going to follow the other, and maybe a problem in your book. But at the same time, we need to follow, and if we shift to 2025, I'm not as concerned about that. But we need to follow a program where we're hiring people. Uh, the gentleman I just replaced up here, Jon Stewart, is an architect with First Racing. We need to get him involved in the remodels of our facilities. We need to go to the county commissioners. There's a lot of work on a second timeline, so that we don't complete the track, and then, oh yeah, now we're going to start the OTBs. And six months later, after we've started racing, we're going to open the doors finally. Whereas, again, I'm not throwing mud, I'm just saying, whereas in other states, they're trying to promote the, the OTB income as quickly as they can so that money can go back into the facility. I want to say one more thing that may not be appropriate, but I, hopefully you'll, it's a statement I want to make. Uh, our facility, our business plan, if you will, is that a great deal of this OTB revenue that is net to us as a core group is going to go back into that facility. I'm 70 years old, and this is one of my swan songs, if you will, to get a first-class equestrian center, not just a racetrack. We have a lot of Western people in, in Wyoming, in Eastern Colorado, in Northern Colorado, in Nebraska, and they, none of them have a consolidated location that they can come, that they can count on. We have roping events in the wintertime at LCCC, it's too small. It's difficult. They can't, you know, how do you go from Frontier Days, which is one of the most beautiful outdoor arenas in the world, to a very small postage stamp inside? It's difficult. We want to create a facility that is all about horses and, and, and promotes horses, and racing is, is part of that. I want to also say, in, in no way is our facility going to detract from Cheyenne Frontier Days. This is going to, I hope, be a symbiotic relationship. We've had some conversations with certain folks. We've had some conversations with certain folks there. You know, I know most of those people. Frontier Days, if you know it well, is compressed into a very small area at Frontier Park. They don't have room for the cowboys. They don't have room for the horses to get out. They're in very small stalls in many cases, and so on and so forth. So, we don't intend... I'm not sure, and I don't wanna make an assurance that I can't make, but it's not my intent to be running race days and taking any business spotlight off of Frontier Days. We wanna be an annex for them, a safety valve for them. And Laramie County needs that.
Mr. Edwards, my concern is that if we approve your application today, what are we approving? And if what we're approving is this temporary track facility, I don't wanna do that. I don't think that provides a meaningful contribution to live horse racing in Wyoming. And that's my concern. I think that's what you're asking us to approve. And once we do that, I'm not sure the commission has the ability to require upgrades. And if we're doing that just so you can have races in October, which is a negligible month anyway for horse racing... It's not a bad month for fly fishing, as you and I know. That's my concern. And it sounds like you're having trouble getting your arms around this, and I am too. And so, maybe there needs to be some more time nailing down what it is that you're asking us to approve. Now, we have more meetings. I mean, we do meetings. We have another meeting scheduled in September, but we do special meetings and so forth. That's what I'm having trouble with, is the amorphous definition of what you're asking this council to approve, this commission to approve. And I wanted you to understand that. You know, I'm 70 years old too, so you and I kind of relate, but I'm concerned.
Well, let me assure you. We're gonna build a first-class facility. The barns and some of the final improvements, we'd like a little help from our OTB money to pay for.
Yeah.
And I think, does that not make sense?
Sure.
And so, to build a facility, to build a racetrack, let's not talk about the whole facility, to build a racetrack that is safe, that has the basic elements to run a track, that's what we're trying to do by October. I'm not pushing that. I'm elated with the idea that this commission says, hey, there aren't any deadlines of calendar years, but I've been told. I'm all about October, and I'm speaking for some other people, but hey, I'm the primary investor in this. So, we're down to, hey, the way business ought to be done in Wyoming.
Right.
So, I'm not a problem with that. I'm trying to get a handle on, and maybe this is for another discussion, exactly what you wanna see there, other than what was already defined in the emergency rules for us to run a racetrack, run a race.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like, did we receive some new plans from you guys just yesterday on the layout of the track?
No.
Yes, we did.
President Broussard. Yeah, go ahead. So, between five and seven last night, we got the rendered drawings that they just presented, the site plans of those. But those site plans are different than the ones that are the engineered drawings. They are different.
Mr. President, if I may, the racetrack surface is the same. The purpose of that, the renderings that were sent yesterday, was to show what it would look like without some of the public facilities, that frankly, don't exist at any of the other racetracks either, but that the investment in the racetrack and the safe racing surface and everything that needs to be in place to run safe, regulated, live racing will be done in the first phase.
So, yeah, can I ask a question? So, the... I guess the implication here is you're asking for pre-approval of something. Are you assuming that if you complete all the tasks that we asked to license, that we wouldn't give you a license if you completed the task?
Mr. President, frankly, I would hope this would never be the case. But as things stand right now, we can spend millions of more dollars and come with a completely finished racetrack, including all public facilities, and come before this commission, and you could say no. And we don't wanna put it, and he doesn't wanna put his money at risk doing that.
I mean, okay. Yeah, we have a hand up. Commissioner Cavell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say that I think, as a whole, this whole commission is excited about Thunder Plains and their possibilities of moving forward with their racetrack and their plans for OTBs and all that kind of stuff. You know, we've had some rhetoric about, well, we first submitted an application in January. Let's be honest about it. The application wasn't anywhere near complete with the correct information till later on in the year. That being said, this is Wyoming, and we do wanna work back and forth. We wanna figure out ways to accomplish something. We want to let you know that when you get to the finish line, there's not gonna be any barriers for you to do things. But I guess we're moving into new territory. Nobody's actually built from the ground up a new facility, now that there's OTBs and all that kind of stuff. And so, there's no framework for how to do this to accomplish everything that needs to be done. A conditional approval, I don't know if that's ever been done. You know, I'm not the oldest member on this board, but I think, as our chairman says, there should be no obstacles in the way for you guys to be able to get approval once everything's been done. Obviously, the one thing will be, when do you get to start taking advantage of the OTB income? My opinion is, that can't be done until the final approval for race dates has been done. And in the past, nobody's been able to do that until actually races have occurred. Whether that is, in some way, modified going forward, I can't speak for. That would be a commission approval that would have to take place. But I think there's merit to sitting down with Mr. Edwards and working through some kind of a framework for when they know they've reached certain milestones and stuff like that. And also, I think there's merit in looking at the timeline that's been proposed, because, quite honestly, you would need to have the racetrack done in very early September, completed in order to get all the inspections done, and to be able to have the racetrack open for inspections, for the final certification, the safety inspection, and for practice and for the horsemen and stuff like that. So, I think there's a tremendous amount that needs to be done for it to be any kind of a possibility in October. But back to Commissioner Bowe, I think we need to work on a better timeline and maybe some more meetings in between to reach some specific goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I'd like to reply to Mr. Commissioner Cavell and to agree with some of the things he said. Again, I tried to explain, in my thinking and in my world of development, we typically get approvals, then we build something. And that's why I'm very nervous here, building something as ominous and as expensive as this, and then have it, well, sorry. It's not that I don't trust you folks, but it's government. And I really would like an approval. If you wanna call it, in your terminology, conditional approval, that's fine. But I want something that I can hold on to in moving forward. As far as, are we cutting back? Is this gonna be some kind of lesser track? When you stand at Santa Anita, or any of the other tracks that are as big as the one we're proposing, which is regulation mile track, it is intimidating. These are big. These are not easy to build. The requirements on the subgrade and the final surface is very specific. We have to screen material. We have to mix material. We have to bring it in. We have to compact it, roll it in place, et cetera. Last week, we were in San Francisco, where First Racing is closing Golden Gate Park. Fortunately, they have a beautiful railing system that we're gonna be able to get for nothing, other than taking it down and bringing it here, and that won't be cheap. However, you can't even get this kind of railing. It's very difficult even to order it and find it. This is the kind of emphasis we're trying to bring in. And so, those railings will be in place. All of the facilities will be in place that you require, as far as the surveyed track, the location, the widths, et cetera. And I can't guarantee you that even in June, that I'm gonna have grandstands up. It depends on what is your opinion of a grandstand. I must tell you this, going to Santa Anita during some of the last... What was the event that we were there for?
Santa Deter.
Santa Deter Derby. Movie stars. I mean, what a beautiful place. You've gotta see it to look at real historic racing. There were probably 25% of those grandstands were filled. It's a different world, so it depends on how big are the grandstands or so.
You'd have a better chance of having some barns.
Excuse me?
You'd have a better chance of having some of those temporary facilities, which you're now proposing, be permanent. And so, you know...
I don't disagree with that. But some of these additional things are now pushing the cost of developing something like this very high up. And to expect now, in my estimation at least, what you may be proposing, new rules, that we have to have all that in place before we run a race, and before we get approvals for the OTB, starts pushing it out of the realm of acceptability to us.
So, Your Honor? So, Mr. Edwards, so are you telling the commission that in order for you to go forward with the project, we need to approve the minimum track that you've proposed?
Well, I'm having a difficult time understanding the difference in minimum versus what we did in March, what we showed you in March. It's going to come in steps and phases of completion. It starts with the main base construction, which is the racetrack, built to the specification of HISA and so on and so forth. And that's where we start.
And if I could add to that response, at all times... Yes, thank you. I apologize. My name's Jody Shea.
Oh, I read your memos.
Thank you. I'm an attorney, and I represent Cowboy Racing. President Broussard threw you to Commissioner Bowe. At all times, we have contemplated construction of the track in compliance with the rules and those expectations of the rules. As Mr. Edwards pointed out, it's a phased project. It is a large project, and it's gonna take some time. It is our expectation that come October, the requirements of the emergency rules will have been satisfied. With respect to race dates, even if the race dates were to be pushed back, our ask would be the same. I won't belabor the point, but the investment requires certain assurances that when we get to the finish line, we're able to get that live event permit. I've got comments on a couple other things that have been mentioned this morning already, but I don't wanna switch trains of thought unless folks have additional questions on this issue.
Any other questions?
Yep.
What did you just say about the race date investments?
Commissioner Bowe, what I understood... Sorry, I feel like I'm gonna fall off my chair here. That even if race dates were pushed back, we would ask for conditional or contingent approval based off of the expectations of this commission, as was described to the commission earlier. The application is complete, save the certified report of the completed track. That's where we need to go next. And to do that, we need to complete construction of the track. And so, continued construction triggers dollar signs, correct?
So...
Your Honor. Go ahead.
So, are you suggesting that should the commission not grant the race dates, for instance, in October, you'd still like approval of the application? And then, conditional approval of the application? Okay. Am I understanding that correctly?
President Broussard threw you. That's correct. We do think October is realistic for the reasons that have all already been proposed and described to the commission this morning. A couple other things that I think are... I just wanna clarify, because with respect to the simulcast, the OTB applications that we're talking about earlier, I wanna make sure that folks understand why we've done what we've done. We visited with commission staff to understand how best to approach OTB licenses. We were instructed that we needed to go to the county first. We recognized the county requires this board's approval, and this board requires the county approval. It is a chicken and an egg situation, and we were employing the process as we understood it to be. We presented some motions to staff for consideration prior to this meeting, that was several weeks ago, and didn't receive any comments back that that was inappropriate or not the proper process. And so, we were proceeding based on our understanding of those communications with staff, that we needed some sort of conditional and contingent approval from you all before we could even go to the county. And so, this sort of reflects some of the challenges with the process. So, certainly, it was our intention to go to the county after receiving conditional approval from you all for approval on the OTB locations within Laramie County, then to come back to you for that final approval. The comment was made earlier, or an inquiry, about the safety of the track upon completion. And I just wanted to highlight that the emergency rules contemplate this in such that there is a safety inspection before races begin. So, certainly, that is a fair concern and observation, and I believe the emergency rules contemplate dealing with that as well. We are in new territory, as Commissioner Cavell pointed out. This has never been done in the state of Wyoming before. Nonetheless, we have undertaken all efforts and diligent research to make sure we're following the rules that are in place, because that's the only guidance that we have to understand how to proceed to build this track. And I think that we have done so well. We have done that well. That is probably a better way to say it. We've complied with the rules. And so, certainly, because this is a new tract, I guess I would offer that we don't believe there should be additional rules, in rules that we are not aware of. And so, we recognize this is new territory for all of us. Sometimes, it feels a little bit clumsy, and there's been some hurdles and some questions and some head scratching. Nonetheless, I believe that we have complied with all rules and statutes to get to this And that is the balance of my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Shea, I tried to digest the memo you sent. I guess it was, I'm not sure what the date is, July 9th. And then, about the same time, we got an opposing memo from the three other operators. And I assume you've had an opportunity to look at that.
Commissioner Broussard threw you. I'm learning of this for the first time right now. So, no, I am not.
Well, I think, you know, I think so it kinda... There's these two juxtaposing positions. The opposing memo says that a live permit does not become effective until the date of a live race. Now, I'm not opining on which one's right, but I think, you know, for us to... Now, I'm not opining on which one's right, but I think, you know, for us to get to where you want to go, we have to resolve this contention that's coming up. And maybe, you know, Charlie or whoever, or Mike can help us on this thing, but, I mean, you know, we're kind of caught here with these two competing...
Can you please restate the proposition that you just articulated, just so we clearly understand what the assertion is?
Well, what I'm hearing it from you is that we should give you a conditional permits from which you can go onto the simulcasting, you know, the construction and the simulcasting. What the opposing group is saying is that according, and I, you know, I think you should have the benefit of looking at this, according to 1125-201A, a permit is effective only for the times and at the places for which issued. So what they're saying is, until you actually run that first race, your permit is not effective. And I'm not, you know, I'm not taking a position either way, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how we deal with this.
Mr. President, if I may respond to that, first as a side comment, I find it interesting that the other three operators have worked together to submit something in opposition to an investment of millions of dollars in live racing in the state of Wyoming. But with respect to the specific comment, we have not asked for you to issue us a permit. We are not saying the permit is effective. We are asking for you to give us conditional approval of our application, such that we have a checklist of exactly what it is you expect us to do, and we know that once we've done that, we've been approved.
And you know we haven't done that before.
Well, Ms. Shea...
I disagree. There are some conditional approvals based on minor things like a personnel or a farm, but not a survey of a track or something that large. So I guess my question to you is, part of your business model is predicated on us doing something we've never done before?
Mr. President, we're all doing something nobody's ever done before, and we're asking for your good faith cooperation to help us get to a place that's going to be better for Wyoming racing.
Well, I'll say this, as far as any applicant that's ever come before me while I've been on nine years, eight years, if someone has come to the commission and has satisfied the requirements, we've given them a license. Am I right? There is no case where someone who's not followed the law has been denied a license.
And Mr. President, the counterintuitive part of that is that it is easier to get a license if you're not investing in building a new first-class racetrack than it is if you're going to go lease an existing facility that maybe doesn't require the same investment. And perhaps that is the way your rules are set up, but again, we would request something from this commission that shows your support, shows your conditional approval. As we've talked about the chicken and egg problem, we can't go to the county to start the OTB process, and we're not saying we want to open OTBs. We're saying we just want to start the process and hire the people and sign the leases and begin the work. And yet, we can't do that because we don't have anything from you that shows that you even know and acknowledge and approve of our project. So that's the dilemma, and I understand it's something new and outside the box, but we're asking for your help and your support to figure this out together so that we can go forward with our investment.
Well, on a personal note, I approve of it. I approve of your investment, I approve of your deciding to invest and increase Wyoming racing. I personally approve of that, and I'm pro-business, so there's nothing that you're saying to me that I disapprove of. But I'm one, that's one person's opinion. The commission has to look at your application as a whole. We have to go through our staff, and all of the boxes need to be ticked, and then we'll, when our staff have done all their due diligence, then we take under advisement their work, and approve or disapprove. But honestly, you're asking us to go, to do something we've never done as a body, to say, we're going to relinquish some of our control and some of our leverage to ensure the best product by doing something premature. That's kind of what I'm hearing from you. You want something, you need to say something? Any other comments or questions? Anything from, no hands up there? Anything from the gallery? All right, we will, I guess at this point, does anyone want to entertain a motion?
Okay. Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
And commission members, I feel like we are not in opposition at this point. I think we are aligned.
No, we're not.
Excuse me?
I think we are aligned.
I think we're aligned to do the same thing. It seems to me that in my experience of development, as I explained earlier, going to commissions and councils and getting approval, which in basic is, basically is conditioned upon building something, that that's what, in my mind, I was looking for here today. I've been led to believe, because it makes good sense, a good business sense, that we do that. I don't think bankers loan money to developers to do developments that don't have entitlements. And I think that's what we're looking for, is to get some sort of entitlement that, at the end of the day, the permit's going to be there, or it's granted, it's put in escrow or whatever you want, however you want to look at it. That's, in my mind, what's going on. The fact that we would push the races until the spring of 2025 is a relief valve for me, and I don't mind saying that, because I'm a realist about this, and it was difficult and causing stress in order to compress this construction schedule, which, through you, Mr. Bowles, that was a good term to use. So we'd like to proceed with the construction, we just would like some assurances that when we get there, that we're going to be able to run races. And I'd like to say something else. This is, boy, I've said it before, but until you stand there and you look at this thing, you don't realize what a big, beautiful facility this can be. And it's going to have to mature over time. It is illogical to believe that we would be taking this to a skeletal model, get OTBs, and then walk away from the whole thing. And it seems to me it is always in your ability to pull licenses for particular reasons. And maybe I'm wrong about that, but it's just, for me, it's illogical to think that I'm going to build this thing and not continue to invest in it and to put the amount of money we have put into it thus far and just to drop it. We were talking over dinner last night, and again, I refer to First Racing's experience, racing all over the, and operating facilities all over the United States. This is the only facility of this size and magnitude that matches this type of track, the only one being built currently in the United States. There are other smaller tracks planned. There's one planned for Ogallala, Nebraska. There are some straightaway tracks that are planned for Kentucky, but nothing like this. And so it's pretty special that it is located not only in Wyoming, but in an area that's going to facilitate Colorado and Nebraska. It was also mentioned in this, I'll just throw this out last night, that we better be thoughtful as a state as to the success that others are looking at, specifically Nebraska. That doesn't mean anybody lowers any standards or does it even quite the opposite, but we've got some momentum here. We'd like to be part of the momentum. We'd like to, we'd like to keep that focus on Wyoming. There will be, there will be competition with other states. So going back to why I sat down here again, I'm not sure what the motion should be now. Maybe you do, you know, Mr. Bedrudy, but it sounds like we are creating something that doesn't exist, and yet I think we all, by definition and by hook or crook, have reached the same decision on what it should look like and when it should happen. So somehow, I'd like to make record of that today at least.
Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Yeah. Sure. Mr. President, if I might make a suggestion of a, and again, I don't know your process exactly, but analogizing to what I've seen in other states, a board resolution of support for the project in Laramie County, it can include, obviously, an acknowledgement that there's more construction that needs to be done, but something that shows your acknowledgement of what we're doing, your acknowledgement of the investment we've made, and your general support, that we can then at least go show the county, this isn't a pie in the sky concept that we just made up. So if that's something this commission would entertain, that would certainly be better than nothing.
This is recorded. You could bring this recording. I mean, I, sorry, Sandy, you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for your information, I'm the legislative liaison from the House of Representatives, and I am not a voting member of this board. I simply serve at the pleasure of our speaker. And my bit of heartburn with what you're asking is that there's nothing in statute and nothing in rule that provides for any sort of approval of anything other than a full permit. So that's a bit of concern from legislatively, that in statute, there is no provision for what you're asking for, nor do I believe in rule there is any provision for what you're asking for. That's my comment.
Thank you. Did you want to complete your?
No. What else is there to say?
Yeah. Any other comments we have?
President Broussard, if I may respond to the concern about the authority for this, I would, I would offer that there is no rule or statute that dictates it can't be done. I recognize we disagree as to whether or not it's been done in the past. I would offer that it has been done with 307's live event permit. And additionally, I would simply say that I think the focus should be on the underlying act and whether or not the agency has the authority to authorize the underlying act that is contingently approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, you have a comment? President Broussard, Vice President Cavalo.
Yes, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted, you know, I don't know about the legalities of the resolution and all that. Obviously, I don't have a juris doctrine. We do have, Mr. Kaler could maybe help us with that, but I'd go on record as saying I'm in full support of this, and I can't imagine that there's a commissioner that's not in full support of this. And I'm just wondering if there's not some, some kind of a timeline that you could, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is to get you where you need to go to feel, to feel good about this as investors. I think we, as a commission, want to do everything we can to see you be successful and move forward and stay within the confines of what we have the ability to do. So I guess I just want to throw that in.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowles, green light.
Your Honor, for discussion purposes, what would be the harm in approving a motion or, yeah, passing a motion that approved the application subject to the completed survey and not, and not providing any live racing events at this time, and of course, not approving any simulcast locations? What that would do is it might enable, you know, Mr. Edwards is correct. Usually, you get approval of plans, applications, and then you construct off of that. I mean, telling somebody to construct without knowing whether or not they're going to be able to use it is just very difficult. So if we were to approve the application, which is complete, except for the survey, and nothing more, I guess I don't see where we're exposed, but I may not see it. And that's what I'm asking, is some feedback on that idea. And Charlie, I'm looking for, or Director, I'm looking for your feedback on that, too.
President, President Broussard, if I may, so the application does contain the race dates, so it would have the '24, '25, and '26 race dates, because that's all, it's an all-inclusive packet. So I don't, I don't know how you could approve the application but not approve the race dates, because those are, if that makes sense.
So I guess my question is, you're looking for something to go to a county commission to show that there's some, that there's some support amongst the gaming commission for your future business? Is that, am I close?
President Broussard, certainly, we would love the support of this body. As this body knows, the importance of the county commissioners relates to the OTBs. We have received all approvals at the county level with respect to the racetrack. So that is done. The next thing we need to ask their support for is the OTBs. So that's, that's the tie between this board and the county relates to the OTBs. So Commissioner Bowles, limited motion with respect to contingent approval of the live event application doesn't impact anything at the county level necessarily. I hope I answered your question.
The process, all of this, was in place prior to you guys spending a penny, right? I mean, you guys were aware of the process to get a license, am I right?
President Broussard, we were, the answer is yes, with the recognition a track had not been built before. And so we recognized that there were nuances to that, which I think is really sort of the basis of these discussions that we've had with this board, is that what we are doing is unique, and it doesn't squarely fit within the rules and the statutes. But those rules and statutes were the only guidance we had going forward, with which we believe we've fully complied.
Okay. Nick, sorry, Commissioner Ritholer.
Thank you, President Broussard. Couple of things I'd like to address. One of them is, Mr. Edwards talked about dealing with government. Unfortunately, you are. And we, the biggest thing is, we are bound by laws. We can write rules, but we do not write statutes. That is done with the legislature and goes through the process. And it's pretty plain, we can give you whatever you want, but it's worth, you won't be able to redeem it anyplace, because the law says you race horses before you get your OTBs and the right to do that. So that one is kind of a little hung up. And as far as saying that your track is ready to go, until it's ready to go, it's not. And I guess I would like to tell you right up front, I don't think there's a commissioner against your product or your project, but if you want some risk mitigation, we can't give it to you today. I mean, I just don't know how much plainer to say. We can make all the motions, and Commissioner Bowles, he's an attorney, probably knows, but that and my business card, well, and $7, you can buy a cup of coffee at Starbucks. So we're, but we are in favor of your project. If you got to have the OTBs running before you can finish the track, we at least need to run four. run horses. And the horses will run on a safe track that will be surveyed, and our people will also go in and resample the, the tracks. And so I think October is a pretty, pretty ambitious date to hit to run horses. But, so I guess, I just want to let you know, I am in favor of the project, and when it's all, when we're ready to run horses, everything will come on, it'll, it'll come unraveled, and it'll just be, everything will work good. But as far as giving the, I guess I would hate to give a, a motion that we can't back up anyway. It's kind of pretty much set up in law, how things work. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay. And we, you have a concern? Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, President Broussard. Just to kind of try to wrap up some of this and, and to respond to something that Mr. Edwards said, you know, first and foremost, I think everybody on this board has made a comment in favor. I know that our office has continually been very much in favor. You know, I read a note here that I've, I've written, "The commission looks forward to a new track being built in Wyoming, but like many things, it takes time to sort through the applications and have a clear understanding of what is being proposed. Patience is required." To your point, sir, you have some more assurance that, that this could potentially back away from the October race dates, because that's a very aggressive plan. Look at '25 and '26. So, and, and so taking that methodical and step-by-step approach to bring this to fruition, you know, so everybody understands, if we're scheduled to run races October 4th of 2024, this is the timeline that we have to have. First and foremost, by August 4th pursuant to our rules, we have to have all your lists of officials submitted to the commission. We will start working through that list of officials and getting those background checked and, and going through that list of officials. Our rules, we've got to have those October 4th, or excuse me, August 4th. September 2nd, we need to have that track completed and a certified report received on that date, which is a Monday, I believe. September 3rd, the commission would consider that certified report. And then, once we've, we've considered that, we would be in the process of reviewing all the applicants, everybody. We would start then at that point, looking at hiring three stewards. We would have to hire one commissioned safety officer, a commissioned veterinarian. Right now, I have a veterinarian, I don't have a veterinarian that, our veterinarian we currently use is unavailable in the month of October. Licensing clerk, we need to extend our agreement with the laboratory to do, do that contract and then the racetrack safety inspection. We have to schedule that inspection. That's not overnight. That's a contracted position. We have to post that. We have to get that out there. And, and so, so you understand our timeline is why I'm doing this, not, not looking at being punitive for you. So then, September 4th, we would need all of your equipment and implements to be utilized. Again, that's not a huge thing. That's not a big lift for you all. And then the commission would consider the racetrack safety inspections. September 9th, pursuant to our rules, the track needs to be open for training at that point, again, looking at an October 4th opening date. Again, we would have licensing folks on staff, what type of office space, again, there's temporary buildings, stewards on the grounds, October 30th, excuse me, I'm getting, I'm looking around here, I apologize. September 30th, we would have our licensing office open. September 30th, we would have stewards on the ground. And then, of course, first day of racing would be October 4th. So just so that helps you understand our timeline, that we would have to have to get this in place, and it's very aggressive. Honestly, I'm not sure I can pull it off. But one thing that Mr. Laramendi and I have done, we've been given impossible deadlines throughout my whole career here, whether it was from the legislature, legislative branch, or the expectations of operators and permittees, we will do everything within our power. However, we're dealing with several third-party individuals. So with that being said, commissioners, I wanted to bring that up so everybody understood that.
Thank you. Okay. You have something to come?
President Broussard, I, you look like you're getting ready to maybe take a vote. If I could just ask one question and maybe make a suggestion. It sounds like there is support for the project, which we are thankful to hear, and we appreciate that. We recognize this is, is tricky, and we thank you for your patience in working through it. But I, I just want to make sure what I'm hearing is accurate. Is it accurate to say that if we do what's expected in, in the rules, we complete the track, and we present a, a report?
Surveying.
Certified report, thank you, I shouldn't have closed my computer, of a completed track that speaks to, to measurement, grade, and distance, that the permit would be issued? Is that an accurate statement?
That's the only outcome. I mean, if you guys follow all of our rules, what, what, of course, I mean, that's, if it satisfies the licensing requirements, then that's, that's why we're all here. A lot of the, a lot of what we're doing in Wyoming is to increase and promote horse racing, but we have to do it in a safe, we have to, we're responsible for the reputation and the safety of the horse racing in the state. So, I mean, that's, looking at it from our perspective, if it satisfies the requirements by law, then, then I think all of us are fair people. Am I, am I speaking out of school?
Hundred percent.
President Broussard, if I could also make a comment with that. Our rules say a completed racetrack. And, and one of the problems is, we don't have a definition of what a completed racetrack is. So we have to have not only the survey, but a completed racetrack. Again, that perception, I have a perception of a completed racetrack, you have one, we all do. I think they're very similar, though. You know, I've spent my life at racetracks. So, you know, we've got to have that as well.
President Broussard, through you to Mr. Moore, can, can you please share what your perception of a completed racetrack is?
What I'd rather do is provide that to in a written format.
Well, I think the point.
You know, barns, rail, the racetrack surface ready to race on. You know, if you, if you look at our proposed rules that are coming forward, it addresses lighting, it addresses tote board, it addresses patron, lighting in the facility, lightning protocols, it, it addresses rail heights, there, there's a lot of things there, so. But I think what we, what would be in the best interest of this board may be to work on that definition. Or not.
Just, thank you, President Broussard. I, I think Mr. Moore may have summarized that our concern is that his definition of a completed track may not be what I believe is in the rules, and so therein lies the, the reason conditional approval is requested.
Well, we'll refer to the rules.
Yeah.
All right. So we're now at 12:30. Do, did you make a motion or did you suggest?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right.
I don't see how to get through to it.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion, so we can move on?
I don't know what to make.
Okay. All right. Not hearing or seeing anyone make a motion, we will move on. And, sir, go ahead.
I moved to go.
Well, that's a process, well, that's not our job. I mean, appreciate that, and we're looking forward to, to the future for you guys. Okay. Do we need a lunch break right now, guys? Or do we want to carry on?
What's the pleasure?
So I'm, I've been asked for five minutes, and then we'll come back, go for a little longer, and then if we need lunch. Okay, so five minutes, I have 11, oh, sorry, I have 12:30. We will get back together at 12:35.
We're going to resume the meeting in about five minutes. All right, can we re-adjourn the meeting and have a roll call, please?
Thank you, President Broussard. Roll call, President Broussard. Thank you. Vice President Cavello. Is he on?
He's still online, but I will try to get him to.
Okay, Vice President Cavello is online. Commissioner Torgerson is absent. Commissioner Bowles, thank you, sir. Commissioner Schiffer, thank you, sir. Commissioner Rithaler.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kura is absent for the remainder of the meeting. Commissioner Francisco.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Wildcat is absent. Senator Driscoll is absent today. Representative Newsom is here, thank you. And Governor's liaison Lebanon is absent today as well. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Charlie. So we'll jump right into General Commission business, and that is item 10. We'll start with item 10A. Charlie, legislative report, if you got it.
Thank you. Item 10A, General Commission Business is the legislative report. Just a quick recap from the JAC meeting. I'm sure the majority of you commissioners were able to either be in person, and I thank you for that, and also the committee was very appreciative of your attendance and of your testimonies. I've heard from a couple of the individuals, and they really appreciated hearing from you at the meeting. There was one, two, three, four bills that were presented. There was no action at this point on any of the bills. One was the city and county approval, allowing more input in the permitting process. Another bill was HHR breakage legislation, taking the breakage and going to the LSRA. The other one was conforming age requirements and also clarifying restrictions in operations of skill games and amending some definitions. And then the final one was the transfer and consolidation proposal to the Department of Revenue. Additionally, there was one other piece of legislation, excuse me, that was provided from the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, but like I said, there was no action on any of those items. I am currently in the process of drafting memos. They had some questions they wanted from us, and I'll have that memo and be forwarding that to the Joint Appropriations Committee and you all as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. So then, Nick, you have the RFP.
President Broussard, an update on the RFP in your packet and in the public meeting packet, too. There's a quick summary of RFP 0246J. Outside of that, I will just wanted to inform you that we have started the process now with them. They have, I think it was yesterday or the day before yesterday, they have made their initial request of documents and numbers so they can get started on that. We're about halfway through that list as it stands today, and we'll keep pushing that forward so they can get started on their study and go from there.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of Nick?
Just one thing real quickly, if you don't mind, President Broussard.
Sure, go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, this morning, the contract has been submitted into the cobblestone system for the AG's review. This is the Contract Division of the state of Wyoming. I made some changes this morning that the paralegals had noted and have already got that turned back. The hope is that we will have this contract executed no later than the 17th, which is next week. We're going to schedule a meeting. We've already had one meeting, Zoom meeting with Spectrum, and I hope to have one next week as well, just to update then and have that inked, and I'll let you know.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, anything further to add, anybody? All right, moving on, we'll move to Charlie or C, compliance report, Nick.
President Broussard, so the compliance report in your packet as well, you'll see a memo for just kind of the standard numbers of amount of inspections and stuff done. There is a few things, though, that I just wanted to touch on, on the compliance side outside of that. For the skill game side, the 24, 25 renewals have been completed. All of the new permits and decals have been mailed out. The old 24 licenses expired on June 30th at midnight. Everybody has their new ones for the last 11 days. Got guys in the field that are going around ensuring that machines are decalled with the correct decal, the 25 decal, and new permits are hung up. We have 374 skill game locations that are operational today. Five of them, or we have five pending applications that we're waiting background checks on. And we have seven approved locations that are waiting for installation of terminals. With all of those, that'll bring the total to 386 locations statewide for skill-based amusement games. Currently, we have 1,300 licensed terminals on the floor, operational between the 374 locations. We have 18 licensed vendors. We have two new vendors that are in the pipeline currently, but we are waiting information from them, fingerprints, payment. One of them, we're actually waiting for all of their plans for that to be a complete application. We currently have six different game manufacturers in use. That's the Vanilla, Passamatic, Tressel, Patriot Games, Bankshot, and Gracie Games. That kind of sums it up for the skill-based amusement games. Is there any questions about any of that?
Anyone have questions for Nick on compliance? Does it sound like any?
On the HHR side, we have 41 operational OTBs with 45 approved. I'm going to change that number now to 47 approved with the two approvals today. We have pending opening locations in Laramie, Douglas, Evanston, Rock Springs, now Green River, and Cheyenne. To date, we have 4,164 approved terminals throughout the state with 2,893 active and in use. 2,893 active terminals. Currently, of the 41 operational OTBs, only nine of those are using the total amount of OTB or of HHR machines that were approved. The remainder of them are using less than what was approved, and that number varies anywhere between one or two machines to upwards of 100 or 160. We currently have five approved HHR backend systems, which is the Paramax system, the Exacta system, Ainsworth, Castle Hill, and Grover Games. We have 16 approved vendors that provide game themes and math models that all connect to those five backends. Is there any questions about HHR numbers or stats or anything there? Okay.
Thank you.
We currently have multiple criminal investigations that are in various stages from initials to waiting on outcomes of. As soon as I can disclose more details on those, as they become adjudicated and heard, I'll make sure to provide that on, but we do have several of them going on. And then also, we have three requests for appeals for Wyoming bred suspensions that will be coming before you all. We had three individuals that had mares breeding stock suspended for non-compliance of We had three individuals that had mares, breeding stock suspended for non-compliance of the rules. They have all requested appeals. I'm currently working with the AG's office to get the proper notices set for those, and then we'll get a date set and get those notices sent out. And then those will come before you, and they'll be able to appeal their suspension to you all for your decision.
What's the timeframe, do you think?
I'm hoping to have those done by the end of this month. And that is all I have for compliance and some general updates.
Thank you. Charlie, we have to do a special meeting for that?
So what, thank you, President Broussard. So what we're looking at doing is holding a one-topic situation via Zoom where everybody can join in and have those appeals and hear those appeals.
Thank you. All right. Is that Nick under compliance? Do you need any questions for Nick? Okay, we'll now move to Delta or the racing report.
Thank you, President Broussard, commissioners. Real quick, I am going to discuss racing, but I'm going to start with the breeders program. Just to give a quick update, as Nick was going over the compliances, they did multiple compliances on the accredited bred program as far as inspections. Most of, all of the horses got done twice and some a third time. So like he said, I think it was 126% of all horses in Wyoming got, you know, inspections done on them multiple times to make sure that they were going with the rules. Out of those, 108 have been so-called suspended, which just means they're out of the program. Some of them, some of them were due to violations of the rules. Some were also because they were either retired or sold. So it's really becoming a good thing that the investigators are going around because we're getting the, all of the data updated in a timely fashion to go over, you know, how many is really being participants in this. At the beginning, we started with over 700 brood mares. So after the suspensions and the other suspensions, retired or sold, we're down to 615 brood mares and 73 stallions currently enrolled for the breeding program. We have a major deadline coming up again. The August 15 deadline is for accredited bred brood mares. I already have a lot of calls, so I think that those numbers will be replenished with new mares coming in. It's usually, last year, I think we did 150 new mares, so the last two years, actually. We've done over 100 mares at each deadline, so I foresee that happening again. People are replenishing the ones that have died. They're buying new ones, going to sales and replenishing them. And then we have a lot of new people bringing horses in, thoroughbred mares. I've seen Uprisong, which is really good for the accredited bred program. We just got finalized today, actually, with Eugene Joyce. The Wyoming Breeders Awards Program is going to be, we're going to do the annual banquet this year during their meet at Sweetwater Downs. We're going to have that September 14th, Saturday, September 14th. That will be in conjunction with the Wyoming bred paternity trials. So a lot of the participants in this program are going to be there to watch their horses run. So it's really going to be, I think, is going to entice them to come and celebrate the award winners. And like I told you before, Wyoming Downs has been a gracious host for the last couple of years. 307 hosted a great banquet one year, but from this point forward, we're going to try to go from, you know, do a circle and have the permittees, if they want, celebrate these awards. Each year, it'll go to a different permittee to do that. And I've talked with all of them, and they were very, all of them were very appreciative of that to kind of spread it, spread it out. Like we said before, it's important to have this done in front of their peers instead of coming before just a commission meeting. It's hard for them to get here like we had in the past, so basically, it's showing, you know, showing off in front of all of them. You guys already approved the awards. They will be there, and I would just like to have all the commissioners and the public, too. Like, please mark that down. We would love to have any of you there, September 14th, there at Sweetwater. So I just wanted to go over those things really quick. The accredited program is strong as ever. We're still on, we believe that we'll still hit around $8 million for the awards. So yeah, it's gone strong as far as that concerns. Moving on to the live racing, I'm pleased to report that we really started the 2024 season on a high note. 307 just completed their 16 days of racing. We were fortunate enough that they did not have to have any cancellations due to weather. There was a couple races, I think, that were canceled, too. But honestly, like the, you know, having weathered that early, we've run into problems in the past, so we were very fortunate for that. Mother Nature was the cause of the other ones, you know, rain, lightning, all that fun stuff. But yeah, so it really did good. The new position in the emergency rules, providing a new track safety officer. They hired George Estrada, who was one of our safety, or one of our stewards, actually. He was in that position, and he did a really great job as far as that goes. All of the staff we hired, the stewards, our safety officer as well, everything went good. I think the commission staff and our stewards really felt that that, it was a good meet. Anything we asked for or had concerns about, 307 addressed it immediately and worked with our stewards well and with the staff. So really, it was a high note. I think really quick, before I move on, if 307 would like to give a kind of a breakdown of the highlights from Energy Downs, and if they miss anything, I can. Jack is not here to do it. We probably should congratulate them as they just had a new baby boy.
So we got the second string or what?
Yeah. So go ahead, Kyle, if you want to do that, and then I'll go from there.
Jack, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Broussard.
Kyle, you have the floor.
I'm not as good as Jack for this part. Yeah, they had their baby at some point really early this morning, so I made sure that he didn't come, even though I think he maybe even tried to come. Because I mean, for those of you that don't know and haven't been to that track, I mean, him and his wife and the rest of that team really puts their heart and soul into making that thing work really, really, really well. I would agree with Brandy, and I would echo comments that I know Jack and I have talked about related to the emergency rules, that they made a big difference for us at the meet this year. You know, Jack had soil samples taken and sent to a lab very early in March so that we had a lot of time before we started running in the middle of May to add sand and do things to make the mix work. So some high-level stats, total purse money that was available over the 16 days was just shy of $2 million. It was $1,996,300. Of that 1.7 million was 307's contribution. $300,000 was from the horsemen. We ran 148 races total, no race days canceled. We had two races that were canceled due to track conditions. That happened to be the day that the legislature was visiting, sadly. But we paid the purse money out for both those races evenly amongst the participants, like we've done before when we've had to cancel days. So we sent $23,200 out the door to the folks that did not get the opportunity to run in those races. We had an average of 9.25 races per day. Average purse money each day total was about $125,000. So that averages out to about $13,300 average purse per race. We had nearly 1,200 total starters. 1,200 total, a little over 1,200 total horses were entered into races. We had 1,800 entries. Minimal breakdowns or issues, so everything functioned really well like it was supposed to. I think a point that I would make specifically is, I think Jack and I talk about this every time we do race dates, but the overlapping race dates that we do currently have with Wyoming Downs, we're having some ongoing conversations with them about that for the next racing season. We tend to lose a lot of horses the last two weeks of our meet where that overlap exists. And I saw some of the dates that were proposed earlier, and so that would overlap our race meet as the application currently was from Cowboy Racing. So I hope the commission takes that into consideration, that we've been granted our race dates already for 2025 and 2026. We did our three years of permitting. And when we're ready to have those conversations about how overlapping affects meets and horse population availability, we're prepared to have those conversations and let you all know how that affects our race meet. Because at the end of the day, you know, we seem to be the meet that gives a lot of the newer horses the opportunities to run. We had a lot of first-race horses their first go, which is great for Wyoming. You know, we focus on a lot of the Wyoming bred, but that's another piece that I think you all as a commission, when you're looking at race dates for next year, should consider when the Wyoming breads are going to get run between all the different operators so that you don't have overlap and you're making horsemen pick what corner of the state they're going to go to for a given weekend because they're all only eligible for the same pools of money. So I think it's, I think the conversations we're having with the other operators about next racing season are very productive to make sure that it's what's good for the Wyoming horsemen. But that's something that the commission should take into consideration because, you know, we had plenty of horses that ran the last couple of weeks, but it did materially affect our race meet. And we had a lot of newer horses running, and thank God, Jack and his team and the emergency rules made that track safe, and we had a great team for it. But, you know, when you're running a lot of new two-year-olds, you're running risks. So other than that, we'll answer any questions about our meet, but we worked really well with that third-party inspection. It was really helpful for us.
Thank you, Kyle. Do we have any questions for Mr. Kyle?
Thank you, Kyle. Moving on, I wanted to go back a little bit. Energy Downs, they...
So when you finish with races, I know that there was a horseman that Mr. Spivey wanted to make a comment. So just tell me when's a good time to have him come up.
Well, okay, I'm going to go over the Energy Downs and then Wyoming Downs, and then after that would probably be the best spot.
Thank you.
So back to Energy Downs, just to wrap that up. They had the very first Wyoming bred thoroughbred derby for Wyoming bred stakes race. In the past year, Sweetwater had the very first thoroughbred accredited race. It was an allowance there, but we actually ran the first stakes race for thoroughbreds this year at Energy Downs, which I'm very proud of, that we're getting that going, and hopefully, we can see that around for all of the other places. The highest, Energy Downs and 307 had the highest purses paid by a permittee for a live event. Wyoming Downs had it, had the highest before at 1.6. I believe theirs this year so far was 1.695. So they gave the most money as far as a permittee putting it in to purses so far. I don't know how that will stack up against the other operators this year, but right now, they did break that barrier, which is pretty amazing. It just shows you, you know, like Kyle was saying, the amount of horses started. The backside was full of horses, not just old ones, but new ones. You can tell that this is happening because of the programs that they're putting on. The horsemen want to run there. It did help having us getting the horses because Arapahoe Park in Colorado did not run. We usually kind of run up against them, so a lot of those did trickle over. So that was, you know, that's good for, and the health of the Wyoming racing. And then on the, one of another highlight that's kind of cool is that 307 ran the first 12-horse thoroughbred race on the last weekend. We've never ran a 12-horse thoroughbred race before. I think they had gates brought in from another jurisdiction and reworked those, so that was really cool to see. So I just wanted to kind of highlight those things to add on to what Kyle had said, that the commission staff had seen. Moving on to Wyoming Downs, like we said before, a lot of highlights going on over there. They have over 1,040 sets of papers in the office. That's unheard of for a small type of meet. A lot of meets, even like in Kentucky, don't usually get that amount. So basically, out of that, out of the, or I'm sorry, 1,070 sets, out of those 431 or thoroughbred papers and 639 are quarter horse paint Appaloosa, which means 40% of the papers are thoroughbreds, 60% are quarter horses in there. So that's, the backside there is full as well. The reports that we have been getting at the office and being at the track myself, the horsemen have expressed their gratitude for the new track superintendent that they hired. They really feel it's made a huge difference. They feel they can talk to him, and they just really have, have really given us a thumbs up on that, that the commission, and that's all part of the emergency rules as well, having a superintendent, but a lot of raves out of the horsemen for that reason. On the other end of the spectrum, we do have some interesting concerns or complaints that have come up in our office with our, not just with our agents, but with Charlie and myself and Nick, have been feeling quite a bit of calls and regarding the stall, well, number one, the stall allotments. A lot of people saying that they couldn't, not just that they couldn't get stalls, but they might have been given stalls, but if they weren't there the first weekend, then they were given away. The problem, the biggest problem with that is, this is what happens when you have high purses. You know, it brings in a whole different demographic. I mean, they have a lot of people there from Arizona. We've probably licensed 300 new people between Energy Downs and there of just new horsemen that have never been to Wyoming before. And it could be higher than that, but I know for sure it's at least 300 because the first weekend at Wyoming Downs, everybody, you know, it was all of those guys from Arizona coming in. So, but the problem, and that's concerning to me as the Wyoming bred administrator, is there are some Wyoming-based trainers that were not afforded the opportunity to have stalls there. And so they're in Montana, sitting on 50 head of Wyoming breads that are not in Wyoming, they're in Montana. So, and these are people that have run here for, have supported Wyoming racing since we started, I mean, 40 years. And they were, they called, and they're just very upset about that. So I mean, I think that that's something that raises a question, how do, you know, we have to entice other places to come, but how do we protect our Wyoming bred horses and horsemen? It really is a travesty that there's that many out of state, and the fact that out of those 50, about 35 of them, they said were paid into stakes races at Wyoming Downs. But they're 600 miles away in Great Falls. So that was one of the concerns. We also had concerns about the workout rule, where they had to be at the racetrack and work on that racetrack, and they had trials the first weekend. And how could they get that done when the track doesn't open, you know, in enough time for them to get in there, to get that? Was there a complaint regarding that? And that, of course, the quarter horses aren't getting in as much as the thoroughbreds. That always seems to be a common, common theme around there. But other than that, I think that the live racing, and we'll let, I think Frank Lamb's here, if he wanted to come up and address some of the highlights so far, we're halfway through the season there. This weekend is the legislative day at the races on the 12th, so anybody that can go, please go. It's also the First Lady's Hunger Initiative. So it is a really big weekend for Wyoming Downs to showcase, kind of like the JAC was showcased in Gillette. It's, this is going to be showcased. It's, it's, this is going to be showcased at Wyoming Downs. So for that, the, the commission is, you know, we always work with these operators to, to do better and everybody seems to be, you know, falling in line. But with that, I would just like to end what I have for live racing and turn it over to Frank.
Thank you, Brandy. Frank Lamb, Wyoming Downs. Yeah, it's been a great meet so far. We're halfway through, like she said, and we've had some terrific days last Saturday. We had over 2,800 people at the racetrack, which is about as many as we want to try to handle and get them taken care of properly. We handled over 130,000 that day. Our, our handle is up 22% through the first 10 days. It's, it's very encouraging. Wyoming racing is, is, like I said many times in the last few years, Wyoming racing is, is on the map and it's pretty cool. We, as far as purses go, we've spent, through the first 10 days, 1.2 million in purses. Projected, of course, to do 2.4 million in purses. That's just, that's purse money, not horsemen's money. You know, Brandy mentioned that the, the stall situation, we've got 650 stalls. Last weekend, Ted Nicholson from ECL was there and we went back into the barn area and looked at where we can build additional stalls. And we're getting bids on it as we speak. So we'll be getting at least one new barn for next season, which will have 52 stalls in it. The plan is to build a new barn every year. I'd like to get two every year, but that's the plan right now to, to help with that situation. You know, the, the, the horses that had to go to Montana, that, that, that person had stalls. There were allotted stalls, but they didn't fill them. And so we had well over 300 hit on a waiting list opening weekend and we, the stall man and the race secretary filled our stalls. And so, you know, the other problem that I don't think Brandy did mention is, is we've had some, or maybe she did, we've had some guys having trouble getting their maiden, quarter horse maidens in. And we're riding a two-year-old maiden race and a three-year-old maiden race every day, at least one. But I, I went and did some figures on it. Looks like if you, the horses that have been at the meet since the beginning, those in that category, the two and three-year-old maidens, they're able to run at least once every three weeks if they want to. So it's, it's not, it's, before it's always been if you entered, you were going to run if the race went, you know? So it's just a, it's just a different way of, of, of doing business because you have so many horses and it's not a unique problem to the industry. It's kind of a unique problem for us and it's just part of growing pains, I think. But no, we're really, we're really excited about, about what's going on. I know there's the, there's also been some, some discussion about, you know, having more thoroughbreds and we do, we are running more thoroughbreds, but it's about 50/50. Quarter horses are still outnumbering the thoroughbreds in the races that we run. Matter of fact, there's a day coming up, July 28th, where all day will be quarter horses. There won't be any thoroughbred racing. And so at, at the end, at the end of the day, at the end of the, the race meet, the quarter horses will still outnumber the thoroughbreds. But like I said, I'm just, we're, we're really excited about where, where things are headed and I stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lamb? Anyone out there? Yeah, go ahead.
President, thank you. Mr. Lamb, do you have any ideas on how, you know, I, I know we are, as Brandy said, very much involved in promoting Wyoming breads, you know, keep, keeping those horses here? You know, they've nominated to your races, somehow figuring out a way that they can be there and, and run. I mean, do you have any thoughts on that, any ideas?
Well, we, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schiffer, in our, in our own rules, we say, we state that, that horses that have nominated to our stakes races, we will try to accommodate any way we can in stalls. So, yeah, we're going to try to accommodate them. As far as how many horses were not given stalls that were nominated, I don't know that number. And I, you know, Brandy mentioned a number, but I, I don't know, you know, I can't substantiate that number, I don't know. But I know if someone came, came to us and said, hey, I got this horse nominated in the, in the open fraternity, we're going to try to find a stall, you know? So I, I don't know that we can do any more than that. Does that answer your question, sir? Yes.
You've had temporary stalls this year?
We do not have temporary stalls, Mr. Chairman, but interestingly enough, there are temporary stalls popping up all over our barn area. And the first owner, trainer to ask for that because he didn't have enough stalls, went and bought a dozen pre-ferment panel stalls with roofs on them and put them up next to his barn so that he would have enough stalls. And people started asking if they could do that. And our stall man said, sure, let me, let's see where we can put them, where it's safe. And, and so we, I don't know how many we've got, but there's, every day I go through the barn area, I see a new one somewhere.
Cool. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Frank? You go ahead.
Not so much a question, but just a, just a statement that I know that what's done is done for this year, but, but moving forward, the horses that are out of state right now in Montana are from Broken Bones Cattle Company and Whitey Call, who have been staples in this industry for the beginning of time, it feels like. So for everybody involved with, no matter what racetrack it is, I believe that we have to focus on keeping Wyoming breads in Wyoming and giving them opportunities to run here despite, you know, just let's start the conversation to how we can prevent this in the future. Because I think that those horses, I talked to Jess Matt and Jesse Villegas regarding the number of horses paid into, to fraternities there. Some of the problems is, even if you haul in, if you don't have a place to stall and you can't be there for more than the weekend, you know, these horses need to be stood in the gates, they need to, a lot of them want to be, at least hit the track and be worked at the track. But Wyoming doesn't, or, or outside places don't really have places off the track for them to stall. So they would have to haul 600 miles. And the reason why they're in Great Falls is because there's no facilities really around that, that can accommodate them. So they went to the closest racetrack that was, you know, operating. I think it's a, a major concern that I would like to, like I said, as the Wyoming bred administrator, I feel very passionate that anytime, if our, we want Wyoming breads to go outside and run, we want it to be because they want to go run in a big race somewhere, not to be that they feel forced out or not be able to, you know, get stalls on these, on these tracks. So it's just something that I, I would like to, you know, look forward to discussing with all of the operators and, you know, let's keep, you know, Wyoming, the Wyoming Breeders' program is, is an amazing program, but we have to make sure that we protect not only the state, but the participants that, that pay to keep their mares here. So with that being said, I'm, I'll stand for any other questions.
Okay. So that's, that's the end of the report for, for live racing. Mr. Spiva, did you want to make some comments before we move on?
Yes.
Frank, don't. Stay there, Frank.
Frank, I've gone over most of the stuff that I had.
Mr. President, Commissioners, Director Moore, I'm George Spiva with Wyoming Allbreeds Racing Association. I'd like to say that we've been honored for several years to work with Wyoming Horse Racing. We've been their Horsemen's Association for years. We have been the Horsemen's Association for 307 Racing since their inception. And we look forward to being the Horsemen's Association for Cowboy Racing. I would like to echo Brandy and the commission in congratulating 307 for running a very, very good meet up there. Thank God the weather hung with us. But the thing that the horsemen enjoyed about that meet as much as anything, I think, is they wrote races for the horses that were going to be in their barn. And congratulate on, on the almost $2 million in purses. If we applied the same percentage going into purses that 307 and Wyoming Horse Racing has agreed on, using last year's numbers, the purses at Wyoming Downs should be about 3.2 million for the year. And I don't know if the former owner was just tight or a very good businessman. And, but the, we are, horsemen are very happy to see the, the increase in, in purses. I've been a beneficiary of that, that increase. The, with the horse numbers that Brandy has given us, that ends to, ends up to be about 40% thoroughbreds and 60% quarter horses in Wyoming Downs. Going back through a lot of the overnight sheets, it seems like the races written over there are probably 60% thoroughbred and 40% quarter horses. The Wyoming horses are running or competing against out-of-state thoroughbred horses. There's not very many in-state thoroughbred horses and I think that that needs to be adjusted. And, and the horsemen on the track think so also. With the, looking at the overnight for this weekend, there's, well, I would say four and a half quarter horse races and five and a half thoroughbred races. There's one stakes race written as a quarter horse stakes going 870, but when you have three thoroughbreds also entered in that race along with the five quarter horses, I would say that was a mixed race or mixed breed race. Looking at the overnights, I should have brought my phone up. In the first quarter horse race, there was 36 entries, which meant that 26 of those horses did not get to run. In the second quarter horse race, there was 34 entries, meaning 24 horses didn't get to run. Over the four and a half quarter horse races, there were 66 horses that didn't get to run. In the five and a half thoroughbred races, there was 22 horses that, that were excluded. There was more quarter horses excluded in the first two races than there were in all of the five and a half thoroughbred races. I think that needs to be adjusted. You know, we're, we're running the premier quarter horses in the Rocky Mountain area. You know, we've produced some of the horses that go to Los Alamitos, Patty Saint, Sir Lady Moon, just to mention a couple. I don't think that the quality of thoroughbreds, you know, I, I don't think that there's one horse on that track that could go to California and be competitive in a stakes race. So we're letting out-of-state thoroughbreds take our, our spots in our races for the in-state stake horses. And this is kind of what Brandy was, was going at. Another thing is, I don't think that Wyoming Downs is writing the prescribed amount of Wyoming accredited races. I believe the rule is that they write one Wyoming accredited race, quarter horse race a day, one thoroughbred race a day. I know that in this upcoming race day Saturday, there is no Wyoming bred thoroughbred race.
Frank, do you have anything to say about? I mean, I don't know. A lot of this, Mr. Spiva, is not something we regulate, so I-
Well, well, you're right.
Really quick, can I, can I address really quick?
Yes.
The, the Wyoming, he is true on the condition book for Wyoming Downs, the second book, did not have by, by law, a Wyoming bred quarter horse and a Wyoming bred thoroughbred on a couple of days in there. As soon as I found out last weekend, I got with the stewards, I sent them what needed to be fixed. They did talk with Sean, with the, he's the racing secretary there, and with the stewards, and they will be writing those races extras and will take them. Just so you guys know, if, if a, if a race is in the book, which is one through 10, and it fills with six, at least six Wyoming breads, then it has to be taken that day. These, a couple of days, there was none, and then there was one day that there was, they were subs. So we've got that fixed and that will be corrected. Normally I get to proof those. I just, Sean just forgot to send them to me, I guess, to proof, but we did get that situated, just so George knows as far as that. And then also, just because a race is run, they do have to write one thoroughbred and one quarter horse a day. If it fills with six or more head, it has to be taken. If it doesn't fill with six or more head, they can cancel. So I would imagine that on the days that you do not find a thoroughbred accredited race, it's because that on that day, it didn't fill with six. And we're still, like I said, we're still building our thoroughbred pool up to, to do that, but we're still struggling with getting, you know, the two, I think it might have been a two-year-old race that was written for Saturday. Well, they just ran trials for the open fraternity, which I'm sure they were in that. So a lot of it has to do with logistics, but, but he was correct on there wasn't by law written, accredited breads written those days, but we did get that rectified with the stewards and the racing office.
All right, thank you. Okay. Frank, do you have-
Any questions for me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say, Frank, before?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we're going through a period of growth, pretty incredible growth, really. And so we've got a few growing pains. One of them I addressed earlier about stalls. The other one, as Mr. Spiva was talking about, about a race with 24 horses excluded. You know, that's, that's a problem. It's a problem, there's many racetracks in this country we'd love to have, but it is a problem that we, we need to address. I, I was telling Brandy earlier, and I'm, I'm not mentioning names, and, and while I'm saying that, the names that were mentioned earlier when Brandy was talking, I, I'm not looking at, at names or people, I just talking about what has happened. or people, I'm just talking about what has happened. And everybody's the same, everybody gets treated the same. But without mentioning names, I had one horseman that didn't understand what it meant to be excluded from a race, because they're so used to being able to get in, like I said earlier, anytime they enter. So, and we have a date system that gives horses preference over certain periods of time, so that if a horse ran two weeks ago, he would get preference over a horse that ran a week ago. So there's some horsemen having to actually start to figure out what the date system means and how it works. And that's a good thing, in my mind. And so, but I don't disagree with anything Mr. Spiva said. I think that we're just going through some growing pains and trying to address the problems as best we can.
Thank you, Frank. Any other, anybody else want to bash on Frank?
How about Eric?
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the financial report.
You took care of that.
Oh, yep, that's done. Okay, sorry, I got it circled. How about F, Skills-Based Amusement Games Report? And that's Nick.
President Broussard, I actually included that in the compliance report.
Okay, good.
The renewals are done.
Great, so then we'll move to Golf, Online Sports Wagering Report. Is that Mike?
Thank you, President Broussard. I think we covered everything. It's going well. Mr. Steinberg, again, is not here today, so we have nothing to report at this time.
All right, the moment we've all been waiting for, the Director's Report, Hotel.
Thank you. Director's Report, I'll try to make this as quick as I possibly can. One of the things that I want to let everybody understand and know is about our budget. We just completed, and we're now working in the new biennium budget. But at the end of our last budget, we ended up with 10% remaining in our budget. Those are two-year budgets. Our total expenditures, and I have a detailed report on our expenditures. For instance, our 100 Series, which is Personal Services, pay, benefits and different things, we paid out over the two years, 2.4 million. Our 200 Series, which is our Supportive Services, which includes vehicle, vehicles, you know, paper, pens and different things like that, we spent about just over $300,000 there. Our cost allocation is what we pay to the Attorney General's Office and to A&amp;I and to the different areas in the state to support us, support us with $62,000. Our ETS expenditures, which is our electronics and different things and computers, not the purchases of that equipment, but the backend support services, 21,500. 500 Series office space was 108,000, so on and so forth. So at the end of the day, our original appropriation is $3.4 million. We are, we, total expenditure was $3.8 million. We had a budget modification because of the additional positions and the additional requests that we had into, in our supplemental budget, added into our budget $1.1 million. So at the end of the day, our total budget plus modifications was 4.6, and we ended up spending, total expenditures, 3.8. So anyway, we ended the year in a very good position. We're starting on a new biennium budget. And if you have any questions on that, I can follow up later with you off the record if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Charlie.
Moving to the next stuff.
All right.
I'll go quickly. Responsible gambling, want to let you know that we do have a webinar that we're working with the Governor's Mental Health Summit, which would be coming up on September 10th, which is a Tuesday. Sarah Beth will be one of the moderators in that, working on responsible gambling. And that is a webinar, and those invites will be going out to you. I do have, and Commissioners, you have in front of you, your most recent January through June 30th Gaming Commission wagering activity report. Please note that that's unaudited. We just got it out yesterday, and we haven't had an opportunity. But year-over-year increases, live racing handle compared to last year, 28% increase. Simulcasting, which is the live simulcasting, not historic racing, the other aspects, was a 2% increase. Historic racing, that from this year, from last year to this year, we see a 26% increase. Skill-based amusement games, we're seeing a 20% increase over last year. Sports wagering is an 8% increase. And the Advanced Deposit Wagering Platform has increased 42%. Again, once we have that report completed, we'll have that out to you and have that out also posted on the website. Moving on, we are still waiting to hear from the FBI as far as the legislation that was passed. It's, we haven't gotten any notice back from them. We've asked them several times, and we'll continue to push that. We are working under an extension at this point, and we'll keep you posted on that. One of the other things that I'd like to ask of you, would the Commission like me to move forward with a path that would consider new operators? I know it's a little after the fact, but we could move forward with some rules and regulations that would kind of give some guidance down the road. You know, this is a six, eight-month project to do that, but I would be more than happy to start with that if that's the direction the Commission would like to see maybe over the next several months. And it wouldn't need to be a motion or anything.
You're talking about probably getting, putting together rules for new tracks or new operators?
Yes.
Okay. It wouldn't hurt to put things together.
I think the consensus is let's start looking into...
We're a little bit late.
Yeah, thank you. Again, we talked about the September 10th mental health. I have follow-up communication, it'll be going to JAC over the next couple of weeks. We are also looking at, and I've got some pricing for potentially an education project. During the JAC meeting, the Joint Appropriations Committee members mentioned that they need more education. And I've reached out to a few of our, the folks that I know out there in the industry, and I was thinking about maybe a day-long education project that would be held in Cheyenne. We would invite legislators and basically anybody that wanted to join, bring in a moderator, bring in some folks that could kind of go through what we regulate. It would be, you know, we would allow for our current operators to present something as well. We would also have the Commission staff presenting, you know, what we are doing and bring in a third party. It's going to cost, at this point, we have not put together the agenda, and we're not committed to this by any means. It could cost us just under $15,000 to put on a day's program. If that's something that the Commission would like me to continue to look at and bring back to you at a later date, I'll do that.
And you're thinking October?
October, yeah. We have no meeting set for October. I know there's hunting and a lot of things else going on.
Charlie, did you say 15,000 or 15?
15, yes, sir.
Is there any reason you wouldn't do it closer to the session?
You know, President Broussard, Commissioner Schiffer, I was thinking that was almost maybe too late, but maybe, maybe we would do something a little closer. Why don't I reach out to some of our, some of the lobbyists and the different individuals and see if there's a different opinion for that? Because it's a good point. You want it fresh, but you also want the information and, and for, you know, you have probably...
If you just get through here and then you're...
Yeah.
But don't, we'll probably have new legislators after November, so I mean, it's...
True.
After the primary.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll look at that. I'll look at the dates, yeah.
Could we do a Commission meeting the day before or after or something? Would it make sense to do that?
You know, we don't have anything scheduled. In our Commission meeting that is set for November, which is our annual fall meeting, is set as a two-day meeting here. And it's already basically set for here. Again, I could look at that.
That's after the session.
Does the meeting, the educational meeting, have to be in Cheyenne?
You know, again, a good question. I had thought Cheyenne maybe would be close for a lot of our leaders and different individuals that would want to join, but I know it's kind of down there in the end, maybe a more centralized location would work better. A lot of the JAC members are in that part of the...
I like the idea, just work out the details.
Get through the, the idea is good. We just got to figure out the rest of it. Thank you. You know, I think that's kind of it at this point, because we are going to be considering the, we will be submitting later on this week, or first of next, our online sports wagering rules, the Chapter 6 revisions to the Governor, seeking his permission to move forward. And then hopefully today, if we adopt the other set of rules that we'll be touching on, I'll get those uploaded into the rules system tomorrow morning before I head to Evanston. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to Item 11, Rules.
Thank you, President Broussard. We've got, I basically gave you some of our general rules update. In your packets or in your supplemental packets on the orange sheets, you should have a form that we've developed, and it's also in the S, or in the shared drive. It kind of gives you a status report of all of our different rules and where we're at with different things reviewing those. Again, like I just said, we will be submitting to the Governor the online sports wagering rules that you authorized while back and get his permission to move those forward. That's all I have for a general update. Other, well, excuse me, I have one other thing I'd like to ask of you. During our last meeting, we tabled Chapter 10 because there was some very limiting language in those set of rules. I would like to get permission to move forward with that Chapter 10, absent that language, and just work on a lot of the conforming language that we need to correct in there and eliminate, and not deal with the concerns that was raised in those rules.
Well, if I remember, a lot of the rules, the tabling of the rules were predicated on this survey study we're doing. I think that was one of the...
Yes, and President Broussard, what that was pertaining to was the limiting of applications, the limiting of the number of terminals, a lot of those concerns. In the rules, we have a lot of other things that we need to correct and change, bring up to newer standards. And we can also be addressing the horsemen's groups in that set of rules, you know, the requirements for the horseman group, and we can, we can address some of those.
Will the folks who are doing the study be looking at our rules? Is that, I'm guessing that's in their purview. So if they have suggestions after the fact, do we then need to start another whole rule process? That's my question.
President Broussard, another good question. You know, I would assume they will have some suggestions, but again, at that point, you know, we'll still be in the process of this, moving this along, and we'll have the gaming study, excuse me, in October. And we won't have those completed and ready to move to the Governor's Office at that point yet, anyway.
I guess my opinion is, if there's no emergency or drama in the rules, then I don't understand why we need to push them forward right now. I mean, that's just my opinion. Is there other opinions out there?
You don't see a reason to push it forward right now?
I don't know. I don't know, is there, is there a fix that we need to fix now in the rules? Is there a problem that we're addressing in the rules?
President Broussard, again, thank you. I think there's, there are a few things, but again, these rules, by the time the process would be totally completed, would not be going into place until sometime after the first of the year at this point. We would not be addressing the permitted locations, the number that we put in there. We would not be addressing the number of terminals per location. We would not be addressing quite a few of the things that was of concern, but we would be addressing the simple, kind of easy fixes that we can do. And one of the other issues would be to clarify the horsemen's agreements and the need and some of that specificity that we haven't already taken care of.
Looks like we have some comments.
President Broussard, Kyle Ridgway, mine's quick. I would, and I speak for 307 alone, I don't know where the other operators are. I know, I understand conceptually, I think, what Director Moore is talking about in Chapter 10 and what was presented a few months ago. There was a number of stuff that would have dramatically changed how the industry functioned. What I understand him to be saying is he's not talking about those parts of Chapter 10. But there were other things that I think, in general, would provide some clarity to us as operators. There was stuff in there about simulcasting requirements. You know, we have some things as an industry where there are either unwritten rules or things that we've done by custom. And as I think we're learning, you know, over the last six months, having some of that formalized in a better way or engaging in the conversation sooner and getting feedback from the operators is advantageous. So my, I mean, we would like the opportunity to engage in the conversation about Chapter 10 at a minimum, whether you guys do anything with it or not, but there are some basic things around, you know, we've had conversations about like, how many employees do you need to have in the facility or simulcasting or a variety of just other ones, like formalizing that you have to have some separation if there's a restaurant versus the, you know, the gaming side, those kinds of like, simple things around the facilities. You know, there are some rules now, I think at least for us, we'd like to have the opportunity to see those and engage in some conversation or at least submit feedback on, these ones make sense and these ones don't, and here's why. I think we're better off engaging in the conversation now as an ongoing thing, even while the study's going on, because we know at some point we're going to come back and have to do this anyway. We might as well get some feedback from the operators, pro and con, on different concepts now, the ones that are, you know, straightforward, I think.
Okay, I know we had you as next.
President Broussard, I don't believe, I think Eric Nelson's going to let me speak before him, which...
President, I'm here just for the road game, so I just want to get my seat in here quick before Charlie cut us off.
President Broussard, I agree with Mr. Ridgway with the approach that we work with the industry on these rules, you know, prior to presenting them at a meeting. I think we get a lot more input and we can work through the issues as an industry and then present them to the Commission for them to be approved. But I agree also with Director Moore, I think there's some work we can do now while that gaming study is pending. But I think industry input is so important, and we'd be happy to participate.
Thank you. Mr. Eugene, you have a comment?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'm just here, up here in case I have to rebut anything Eric Nelson says. No, I wanted to echo the remarks of the other two operators regarding this. We'd like to be involved in anything moving forward. Thank you.
Any questions for these guys? So I'm okay with putting what the proposed changes are for conversations, that we don't have to spend as much time here hashing out individuals. But also, I don't know if we want to finalize before the survey or the study's finished. That's, so we have time to adjust if there's some suggestive rules or changes.
Thank you, President Broussard. You know, to respond to your question, they wouldn't be finalized. The process takes time, and so this wouldn't be. But what I would like to do is start engaging in Chapter 10 with the operators and with everybody and come up with something. So I'm seeing nods from everybody, so that's, that really at this point is all the indication I need.
I think if we need to fix things, I'm for it. If we're just going to go through a process and, you know, exercise in making rules, that's not where I'm at. Anything else before we...
Mr. Chairman, did we table Chapter 10?
We did.
So what you're going to do is you're going to work on it, and then before it come back in front of the Commission, we'd have to take it off the table. Is that right?
President Broussard... President Broussard, Commissioner Bowles, we tabled chapter 10 draft 041524-2. So we would be bringing back draft blah, 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 differently and work on that and go that direction. If that's the pleasure of the commission.
Yeah, I have, I have no objection.
No objections. Any objections out there in Zoom land? President Broussard, I have Peter Legory with Wyoming Horse Racing. Okay. Peter, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Broussard. I just wanted to just quickly comment that, you know, we had submitted comments on the chapter 10 back in May and would just echo that we would like to obviously work with the commission to make sure what's proposed is workable for all and that makes sense. So I think we've already started that process and happy to continue that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that's, we're still on the general update, Charlie?
No, we're.
We've moved to chapter two.
We've concluded the general updates. We're at item B, paramutual event rules, chapter 2. Chapter 2 is ready for final adoption.
Can you tell me where we're at on the packet?
Page 281. So commissioners, chapter 2, completed the 45-day public comment on June 11th. We received no public comments on that chapter. Again, it's a very simple change that we have, we have proposed and gone through public comment, and we see no objections. In chapter 2, just, just so you know, that's commission rules. Section 2 is corrupt practices. If you look in your packet, they're relatively easy fixes. They're in section 2 there. We amended the language in A and we added, no licensed person shall commit. We struck the or comprise or commit. We added or aid and a bet on that paragraph. And then on the next, on B below there, we added the language, no licensed person shall participate in any unsanctioned or otherwise illegal live flat track racing events.
Thank you.
And then we renumbered.
So at this point, we just need a motion to approve the final draft or the final?
This would be a motion for final, for approval, final approval of chapter 2.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
It's going to be adoption.
Adoption.
Final adoption. Final adoption of chapter 2.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I don't think Mr. Eric Nelson can do that.
All right. So Dan's made the motion and do we have, Cavella?
One second.
Okay.
Second.
Take your, take your pick. Any conversation, any discussion? Any more questions of Charlie or anyone? Not seeing or hearing any, we'll call the rule, call the vote. Sorry. All in favor, say aye. If anyone's opposed, say no. All right, that one's done.
So commissioners, just so you understand how the process will flow now, we will send those to the governor. They will, the governor will have them. He can have a set of rules before signing, up to 75 days, I believe that is. And then once he signs those, those rules will go into law. Moving on, rodeo event rules. Commissioners, you have in front of you the memo from Mr. Kaler. It was requested at the last meeting. Memo is dated July 3rd, 2024. And on page 2 of the memo, if you'd like me to read that, the, the second paragraph or?
Please, go ahead, Charlie.
Yep. Sir?
You'd like to read it?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, Mr. Kaler goes through and it kind of details some things out, but then finally, the final conclusion there, I believe, and kick me if I'm wrong here, Mike, from reading this. The following legislative changes, following those legislative changes, it appears that paramutual rodeo events cannot take place in Wyoming. That is because rodeo participants and those who operate rodeos undoubtedly have access to restricted areas or animals for paramutual activities which require mandatory licensing under 1125104F. In order to license these individuals, Wyoming statutes 1125104K requires that they provide commission fingerprints and other information necessary for a criminal history record background check as provided under Wyoming statute 719201. However, as discussed above, public law 92544 requires Wyoming to statutory define all licensees before the FBI can conduct a background check. Because Wyoming statutes do not define those individuals that would participate in the operation of paramutual rodeo event, the commission cannot obtain the mandatory background checks. Absent a background check, they cannot be licensed and paramutual rodeo events cannot take place at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. So moving forward with rodeo rules, in order to license rodeo contestants, they need to be named in the statute. And that, at this point, we don't have that. So the fix for that would be a legislative fix.
Correct.
Yeah. Secondly, the other fix would be to, to take out or strike the requirement to have background checks from the FBI.
Exempt them, yes.
Exempt them. And that's a legislative fix. Thirdly, lessen the requirement, background check not from the FBI or some other entity. And that's a legislative fix. Are there any other fixes possible that are not at that level?
Mr. President, not that I can think of.
Okay. Do we have questions from the commission? Eric, you want to say something? Go for it.
Just as a public comment, to kind of give you an idea on the rodeo, and I want to further clarify what my role is, is of course, I was fortunate enough to sell Wyoming Downs to ECL and now the new Wyoming Downs is running forward. I am not part of that organization. I wanted to make sure that's clear. However, in the process of the transaction itself, I was able to buy my partners out of 150 acres on the west side, what I call Gateway West Project, and on the east is the Terry Bison Ranch, 600 acre parcel. Involved in those planned, master plan developments would be rodeo events. And I believe the rodeo event is perfect for the state of Wyoming. And so we're going to continue forward and try to get legislation changed to make the rules adapt to that. We've been working on even, I mentioned to Brandy this morning, to put together a rough stock breeding program and a program for the rodeo professionals in that organization to really build that. So we're looking at something that's very unique. We've got pretty much the puzzle put together. It now takes legislation change, which we're fine, we'll go back at it. We thought we had it last year, but I guess we missed the target. And so we're going to continue on with that. But I wanted to, to further clarify that, you know, we're going to continue on. I'm going to continue to be here to press forward with the rodeo side of it. That's my part of it. You know, I'm wishing ECL and Wyoming Downs well. They're a friend, but they definitely stand on their own and they invested a lot of money to, in their facilities. And Frank and that crew over there is doing a fantastic job at the live meet there. But I wanted to make sure that you, that it was clear that I'm here as an individual with Frontier Rodeo and Racing, which is going to present in the future the Gateway East and Gateway West projects. And that's pretty much my involvement. We just wanted to make sure it was nice and clear. For 25 years, I've been coming here as an owner of Wyoming Downs. This is the first time I'm, that I'm not, and Charlie didn't give me a going away present, so I wanted to come back and at least shake his hand one more time. So I'll be backing around. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
You deserve a hug. Not just a handshake. So at this point, as far as this item of business, we don't need any action or do we need to table it? What would, what do we want to?
Nothing.
No action? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We will keep these rules in place and keep them and we'll wait for the changes.
See what the legislature does. All right. So moving on to chapter 3.
Yes, thank you, President Broussard. Chapter 3, the fixes here are, if you look at page 1 of chapter 3 on line 5, just a formatting change. Also, if you note on line 10, we had some confusion this last year, who's the petitioner, who's the respondent? So working with the AG's office with Mr. Kaler, we came up the additional language here to change it from being the commission to saying, the respondent shall mean the party against whom a petition is filed. Keep it more generic. Keep it in that kind of a spot. If you look at line 13 there, line 13, again, it's formatting. Now, if you go down to line 17, again, we've, we've come onto some situations to where a five-day period for filing an appeal is, is quite problematic. And so while it's okay at the racetrack, it's, it's very difficult sometimes for folks in, in other spots. So it's the staff's recommendation, Mr. Laramendi looked at this and worked on this and Mr. Steinberg to extend that, and with Brandy as well, to extend that appeal, the ability to appeal to 14 days. Going on down the line there, we did add in some language on 26 and 27. We removed roping official and we added rodeo official or state breed register, again, to encompass everything that potentially is coming forward and also to be able to make it very clear to the public, they can also appeal to state breed registry. Again, formatting, the remainder of that page, page, the next page is just formatting. If you go to the third page, this would be 324 in your, your commission packets, again, respondent, changing that to a more generic form. Again, you have other formatting. The next page, no changes. Next page, 3-5, no changes. No changes. I think the next change would be the last two pages, again, changing from the paramutual commission to the gaming commission. So it's all strictly formatting with the exception of a couple of those notes. Mr. Kaler has had the opportunity to review these rules. If you would, if a motion was your pleasure today to move these forward, we would get this prayer to move this to the governor, get his permission to proceed, and then we would start public comment.
All right. At this moment, we'd entertain a motion to move chapter 2 forward.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bowles seconded it and will now open it for discussion. Don't see any. All right. Not seeing any discussion or questions, we will call the vote. All in favor of moving chapter 3 forward, say aye.
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 If you're opposed, say no. Okay, beautiful. We're moving on to chapter, item 12. Do we see a need for executive session?
Add it.
Don't see that. Item 13, dates.
The next commission meeting is set for September 12th here in Casper in this same room. It'll be offered also via Zoom and available on YouTube. November 13th and 14th is our annual fall meeting. It is set here in Casper at this point. And we'll look at those dates to maybe try to look at bringing maybe the education project maybe to closer to that date or on that date even to, and looking at that. So that's all I have. The only other thing, just to remind you, we will have, be hearing, hearing three appeals. We'll do that via Zoom and I appreciate everyone here today and hard work.
And that's most likely August sometime?
Um, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. It's very possible we may have another meeting here real shortly. We have a set of rules that will be coming out of public comment shortly that we need to keep moving, but it would just be a one topic, one item situation.
Thank you.
Zoom.
Okay, before we adjourn, is there anything that we missed? Not seeing anything on Zoom. Thanks, guys, for coming. Appreciate it. And we'll adjourn the meeting. Appreciate it.